I now call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District to order. It is 6:01 PM on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. We good? A quorum of the board is present and this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The first item on the agenda this evening is the invocation and Trustee Dawson will open us in prayer and Trustee Semler will lead us in the pledges tonight.
Lord Jesus, we come to you tonight thankful for a new year, a new academic year, thankful for life, thank you for the beautiful rain today. Lord, we just pray that you would be near to all of us. As we have this board meeting tonight, Lord, and as we have board business, I just pray that things would go smoothly, that everyone would feel seen, heard, valued, and loved. And I just pray over this sweet district, Lord, that you would protect our children this year, that you would empower our teachers, Lord, and give us the wisdom on the board and as administrators to do the best possible job that we can do. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, trustees. We're pleased to begin tonight's meeting with special recognition. Dr. Landry, please do the honors.
Thank you, Madam President. We have our Fine Arts Director, Dr. Robert Horton, will share an award that was on behalf of the Fine Arts Department.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. I am excited to share with you that Conroe ISD has received a 2025 designation as a District of Distinction from the Texas Art Educators Association, TAEA. So let me begin by thanking you, our Board of Trustees, for your support of fine arts that allow opportunities like this recognition to be possible. We received this honor for providing a well-rounded education that advocates for and integrates visual arts curriculum to inspire creativity and provide opportunities that connect students to their community and beyond. So just a few words of explanation, TAEA, the Texas Art Educators Association, is the leading advocate for visual arts in the state. It has previously honored outstanding members individually for their work in the classroom and is now honoring districts. So for this award, over 1,200 districts were eligible to apply. To earn this award, we submitted documentation from a 14-point rubric which evaluated the 2024-2025 school year. I'm proud to tell you that of the 109 districts that were awarded this and met the high standard and the honor that we have received puts us in the top 9% of all school districts in the state of Texas, and we are so very proud of that. This quote from Sandra Newton, who is the Chair of the Administration and Supervision Division of TAEA exemplifies this award. "Conroe ISD has set high standards for visual arts advocacy, has integrated visual arts curriculum, encouraged creativity, community participation, and student growth. It is a true testament to our art educators' skill, dedication, and flexibility that the quality of their programs continue to provide strong and comprehensive visual art educational experiences for students." 2025 is the fourth consecutive year that Conroe ISD has been named a District of Distinction by TAEA. At this time, I'm very happy to invite forward several of my colleagues who are here to represent us, teachers in attendance, and our Fine Arts Coordinator, Dr. Lisa Davis, who actually led all of the work for this recognition, to please come forward and share in this recognition. Thank you for giving your support and recognition to the exemplary work by our visual arts teachers and students in Conroe ISD.
We have a tiny little poster here.
Very small.
Very small little poster. Hard to see.
Well, we're back at it again. Here you are. We never tire of seeing you folks up here, and we are just so honored and so proud of you for just prioritizing a well-rounded student. I mean, we exemplify so many things here in our district, and to be able to just reach that upper level of excellence yet again, and again, and again, but being in the top 9% of achieving this TAEA award is really special, and I'm just really proud of our team for just working so hard and prioritizing this with our students. So, thank you so much. On behalf of the board at Conroe ISD, we are very proud, and congratulations.
Madam President, next we have presenting the Ambassador Awards for the Conroe ISD Police Department is Conroe ISD Chief of Police, Chief Matt Blacklock.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. It is my distinct pleasure to be able to recognize a few of the many hard-working members of the Conroe ISD Police Team. When you have the benefit of working with over 200 employees dedicated to keeping our students and staff safe, it is difficult to select only a few. Those that I introduce to you tonight are truly representative of all of our amazing Police Department employees. The first person that I would like to recognize is Crossing Guard Shirley Herbert. Shirley started out at Conroe ISD as a Crossing Guard in 2018. Within a few months, she moved to a full-time position as a Prevention Control Monitor. At the end of the 23-24 school year, Shirley decided to retire, but she just could not stay away from Conroe ISD. She returned as a Crossing Guard during the 24-25 school year. Shirley is known by students, staff, and parents for her care and concern for their safety as they travel to and from school. She is a friend to all and goes above and beyond to represent Conroe ISD at the highest level. We are so happy that she decided to continue being a part of our Conroe ISD family. The next person that I would like to recognize is Police Officer Joshua Broussard. Josh Broussard began his law enforcement career as a jailer at the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. Josh worked there for close to two years before being hired as a Conroe ISD Police Officer in 2017. He now holds an Intermediate Peace Officer Certification. When you think about the qualities that a police officer needs to have to work with kids, Josh possesses all of those qualities. While ensuring the highest level of safety each day at Conroe High School, Josh also gets to know the students, and they know him. An integral part of being successful as a campus police officer is building trust with students and being a mentor to kids, and Josh sets the bar for other police officers. Josh was also this year's, this last year's Police Officer of the Year in the department. The next person that I would like to recognize is Corporal Randy Longdon. Randy Longdon began his law enforcement career in 2005 with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. He was hired as a police officer for Conroe ISD in 2007. Randy has worked various campus and patrol positions throughout his 19 years with Conroe ISD and was promoted to Corporal in 2013. Randy possesses a Master Peace Officer Certification. Currently, Randy works with our K-9 Division as an explosive sniffing K-9 handler with his partner Saru, who is resting tonight. This assignment requires tremendous specialized training and a variety of certifications, from daily random checks to conducting sweeps at large venue events to responding to ours and other law enforcement requests for specialized K-9 needs, Randy is always there, with his partner, to ensure the highest level of safety for Conroe ISD. He is truly an asset to our district and the community. And the last person I want to recognize tonight is Officer Deborah Quiller. Deborah is in her seventh year as a Conroe ISD Police Officer. She has an Advanced Peace Officer Certification. Deborah is assigned to Morehead Junior High as the Campus Officer. She spends her day ensuring the campus is secure and taking the time to talk to her students throughout the day. She is a tremendous role model and mentor to our students and always has a smile on her face. I knew you wouldn't let me down. On top of all of her regular daily duties, Deborah works many evenings and weekends for CISDPD in all things community outreach. From safety presentations to community events, you will almost always see her there promoting safety and strengthening our relationships that we build with students, parents, and the community. She is an excellent ambassador for Conroe ISD and the Police Department, and we are very happy to have her as part of our team. Thank you.
Wow, guys, it's an honor to get to stand here and on behalf of the board, thank you for all you do. You guys are the most valuable part, are one of the most valuable parts of our campuses. The first thing a lot of people see or they look for is your presence, and can't tell you enough how much that means to me as a parent and in the community as a whole. So thank you for what you do each and every day, for showing up and putting yourself on the line for our kids. It means more than you'll ever know. On behalf of the board, thank you all so much.
Madam President, next we have presenting the awards for the Ambassador Awards for Human Resources is Executive Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Paula Green.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. Thank you for recognizing the work that our Human Resources Department does each day. We are fortunate to have a group of people who not only care about the work that is done, but genuinely care about the employees and families that we serve each day. I often describe our department as being made of two houses, the first one being the personnel side of the house and the second one being the benefits side of the house. This evening, we have the honor of recognizing HR staff from each side. Our first honoree is Terrell Jackson. She is our Teacher Incentive Allotment Coordinator. Terrell has served in the district for four years. She joined our HR team at a pivotal time for the district. TA had just approved the district's TIA application, and it was time to dig into the work needed to implement the plan designed by the TIA stakeholder and steering committees. From day one, it has been apparent that Terrell's commitment to learning and leading is among the best. She is known for her knowledge of the TIA program and her accuracy in understanding the meaning of required data and potential outcomes. Her support of TIA campuses and administrators is tremendous. The training she provides helps ensure that the district stays on track for data validation each year. Her commitment to the TIA program is recognized not only by the district, but other district teams. She is looked to as a resource and as a presenter for TIA-related topics to groups across the region. Thank you so much, Terrell. And our next honoree is Jill Bartlett. She's our Employee Benefits Specialist. And Jill has served our district for 11 years. If the saying, "People do not care about how much you know, but about how much you care," were a person, it would be Jill Bartlett. Through her work as HR Benefits Specialist, Jill ensures that the services provided by our benefits team are top-notch. She is knowledgeable about the plans that make up our benefits package and helps employees navigate available options. She is also known to be an advocate for employees and families in need of support during some of the most difficult times. Feedback is often received from employees who speak up to the care and concern that Jill provides, which goes above and beyond what is written on paper. She is also our Wellness Coordinator. She coordinates the district's annual health fair. Each year, our employees come out, and they enjoy the benefit of engaging in a variety of wellness-related topics and activities. This year, Jill arranged for a lifeflight helicopter to land on-site at College Park High School to provide attendees with information about the services offered. This does not happen easily. We thank Jill for the work that she does each day.
So ladies, I'll just take another minute and thank you both. What you do is invaluable, the phone calls you take, the questions you answer, whether it be from the staff or the board or who else might come to you, your knowledge. Ms. Jackson, I know about a year ago, maybe, you blew us away with all you knew about the TIA program, so can't thank you enough for that and for the work that you do to coordinate all the things in the office and then in the community and outreach and just the phone calls that you take as well. Can't imagine the daily routines that y'all have. So on behalf of the board, just want to say thank you for all you do to contribute to this great district. So thank you all.
Congratulations to all of tonight's honorees. Your accomplishments make this district pride, just so proud, and we appreciate all. Now we're moving on to Item 3, Citizen Participation. Portion of the agenda, individuals who have signed up to address the board, please indicate the agenda item or topic on which you wish to address the board. Each speaker will have two minutes. Please remember that the board cannot deliberate or take action on matters not listed on the agenda, but may direct the superintendent to look into a matter or place it on a future agenda. We ask that the speakers address the board respectfully and keep comments focused on matters related to the district's business. Ms. Burlock, would you please call our first speaker?
Jason Harvey. Jason Harvey. Brent Fissay.
Good evening, ladies. Tonight I'm going to tell you a story about one family, four graduates from Conroe High School, all of them alumni of the Fine Arts Programs at Conroe High School. They were in the band, choir, or both. They all graduated with honors from Conroe High School. One of them graduated with honors from the University of Texas in three years with two degrees and a triple major in a master's program. Another one ended up getting a magna cum laude degree from the University of North Texas in vocal performance. And another one is now working on being a senior, exame'd to be a choir director for a high school after being two-time All-State at Conroe High School Choir. And a daughter, who's a mom of two wonderful children, and also the Director of International and Domestic Missions for the largest Baptist church in East Texas, and a graduate of the Conroe Academy. All of this happened because of fine arts, but one of those children in particular has a very special story. His first words were in a church singing. He had never spoken because he's on the spectrum with autism. Music was his bridge to our world, and the music programs and fine arts throughout the district enabled him to be a three-time All-State performer in the top choir, top band, first chair, three of his four years, and he was the one that graduated magna cum laude from the University of North Texas in vocal performance. He just got done performing with other opera performers in Houston and performed in Berlin in another operata already. This is the power of fine arts, and I hope this story, my family's story, resumes with you in the notes in the future, and you continue to support Dr. Horton and his incredible staff with everything they need. Thank you.
Sarah Dillard. Sarah Dillard. Kiara McGraw. Kiara McGraw. Mark Brooks.
Hi, I'm a CSD parent, and there are two topics I'd like to comment on. First, Senate Bill 10 regarding displaying the Ten Commandments in classrooms. The bill takes effect on September 1st, is on today's agenda during the closed session. I'm opposed to displaying the Ten Commandments in classrooms. SB 10 is seemingly a violation of the First Amendment's Establishment Clause. There was a recent hearing asking for a preliminary injunction to delay the implementation of SB 10 until the case is decided. My understanding is that even if an injunction is granted, it would only apply to the districts involved in the case. I implore the board to wait on displaying the Ten Commandments in CISD classrooms until the case has been resolved. The board might have the legal authority to implement SB 10 regardless of an injunction, but there's no harm in waiting. Secondly, the religious content in Blue Bonnet. The district talking point is Blue Bonnet doesn't contain religious instruction, it only includes religious references when contextually relevant. This is misleading at best. Religious references are used unnecessarily. The most glaring example I've seen is in kindergarten, Unit 11, Lesson 3, Creation, which is about where artists find inspiration. It includes a lengthy discussion and assessment of the creation story from Genesis. This lesson could have used a nonreligious source of inspiration to make the same point. Parents have the right to opt their children out of lessons which include religious references, but the opt-out process is complicated and opaque. An obvious solution is for the district to create alternate lessons replacing religious references with nonreligious references. These alternate lessons could then be taught to all students. Objections will likely include buzzwords like fidelity and high-quality instructional materials, and will say that it's impractical as the lessons build on one another. These are simply excuses. Remove all religious references. All means all. The district serves students and families of various faiths. Thank you.
Lorraine Rice.
Good evening. This evening I come to express my sheer joy at the idea of the Ten Commandments being placed in all public, Texas public schools. I have to admit it first, I was thinking, is this right? Is this pushing something I believe and live onto others? I quickly came to the conclusion that that thought is part of the conditioning of our current culture, where we feel compelled to not mention and advocate even for righteousness. This nation was founded on these principles and values, these monotheistic Judeo-Christian values. In my humble opinion, we would not even have a country if it were not for these same ideas. Our country, the United States of America, however, was at the beginning a place to live and follow your own beliefs. Believe in the same God who we are encouraged to trust in on our money, it's an idea. If someone doesn't believe in God or trust in God, we still welcome them to be part of this great experiment. These righteous values are so needed today and to serve as a reminder, they've been carved on the doors of the Supreme Court of our land. Surely then they can be stapled or even put up with tacky tape in a classroom. James Madison, the fourth president, father of the Constitution, said, "With divine insight, we have staked the whole of all of our political institutions upon the capacity of mankind for self-government, upon the capacity of each and all of us to govern ourselves, to control, to sustain ourselves according to the Ten Commandments." Only three of the commandments are about our relationship with the Creator. The more difficult task, which was given even more space on those tablets from Moses, was living with others. Even if one doesn't believe in the Creator, could there be benefit from following the other commandments? Honor your parents, don't steal, don't kill, don't lie? These are all beneficial for school-aged children. Following the Ten Commandments is a way of living righteously. It's not an invitation to a specific house of worship. The Ten Commandments are not for the religious, but for the imperfect. That's us. Thank you.
Patricia Spoor.
Good evening, everyone. I am a certified credentialed National School Chaplain for the State of Texas. This is not just a, to me, being a chaplain isn't just a job or career choice, but it's a reflection of my spiritual purpose. I believe that we need a spiritual presence in our schools to be there for not only the staff, the teachers, the counselors, as well as the students and anyone else there, even from the school bus drivers all the way down to the cafeteria worker. So, the National School Chaplain Association was established to promote school chaplains as legitimate and necessary members of a school's staff. It defines the national standards of excellence for school chaplains, and we also are supported by other chaplains as the police chaplains, Sheriff Department, Hospital District as well. It defines the national standards of excellence. It is a nonprofit organization and recognized as a chaplain is a ministry of presence, and we also are there to support children of all faiths. We're not there to just proselytize or to indoctrinate anyone, we're there simply to be a ministry of presence. So we thank you for the opportunity to be in our schools in the state of Texas. We're not only in the state of Texas, in Lubbock, Abilene, Dickinson, Texas right now, also Louisiana, Florida, Oklahoma, and Missouri. So I know that as Montgomery County is always first in the leadership in everything, I hope we're the leadership in having our chaplains in our schools. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Hannah Ware.
My name is Hannah Weir, and I'm here to speak on Texas Senate Bill 111. This bill offers taxpayers transparency regarding how much school districts spend in legal fees in special education cases, helping residents understand the cost versus benefit of continuing such cases. What it doesn't do is prevent districts from defending themselves or continuing litigation. I applaud Conroe ISD for continuing to consider ways to increase transparency. We have been defending a special ed hearing win for over 10 years. In 2015, I had a special ed hearing with our local school district, not Conroe ISD, regarding our son's education. We were advised that parents rarely prevail. Unexpectedly, we won. We thought it was over. It wasn't. Our district has appealed to the Southern District of Texas. We won. Our district then appealed to the Fifth Circuit in New Orleans twice. Again, we won. Our district appealed to the Supreme Court of the United States. Ultimately, they did not take the case. After being rejected by the Supreme Court, you would think that the case would be over. It's not. Today, our case is still going on. Our son was 10 when this started. He turned 21 last week. I predict that we will prevail legally, but I would argue that there are no winners in this decades-long legal battle. The resources that we have spent fighting to uphold our win in court were resources that we could have spent helping our child's ongoing needs. Our district has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on legal fees. If I were to speculate, I would guess closer to a million dollars. Ultimately, the taxpayers foot the bill. Because of the lack of transparency, residents in our school district don't really know how much Spring Branch has spent trying to overturn their loss from 10 years ago. When we ultimately prevail, they will be responsible for our attorney's fees, which are in excess of $500,000. Good districts who are operating in good faith should have no problem explaining why continuing court cases is in the best interest of their district. And I truly respect Conroe for putting this forward. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, President Odin Weller, and Superintendent Dr. Landry. On behalf of Love Hills Youth, Liberty Library Project, the Woodlands Republican Women, Lake Conroe Area Republican Women, and a growing coalition of local churches, we are honored to be here tonight. We've come with a simple mission, to support our schools by donating high-quality, legally-compliant posters of the Ten Commandments printed exactly as required under SB 10 passed by the 89th Texas Legislature. Tonight, we are donating 330 posters to Conroe ISD at no cost to the district or taxpayers, thanks to the generosity of this community. These posters meet every SB 10 requirement, verbatim King James Version text, proper size, visibility, and durability for classroom display. In my work with vulnerable youth, I have seen how God's Word brings hope. My prayer is that these posters not only inspire hope in students, but also encourage them to bring their questions home, strengthening family bonds, and affirming parents as the primary guides for values and faith. Our founders understood that liberty requires morality, and morality requires faith. Displaying the Ten Commandments is both a recognition of our nation's Christian heritage and an opportunity to strengthen character formation for future generations. This is part of a larger statewide effort. To learn more and to see the official design, you can visit www restoramerican schools dot com. We thank Conroe ISD for allowing us to come here alongside you in this historic effort. May God bless your students, your educators, and each of you who serve with such excellence. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Cosi, and I'm the parent of two students in Conroe ISD. On September 1st, Senate Bill 10 is going to require that the teachers of my children's classrooms put those posters up on the wall. An injunction, as you heard, is pending on multiple school districts. I am hoping that those school districts receive that injunction. A new precedent was also set this past June establishing my right as a parent to direct the religious upbringing of my child, even when in public school settings. As you know, there are more belief systems in our community than you can list. And many of those do not follow those Ten Commandments because they are beholden to the commandments of their faith. I am a product of Conroe ISD, Class of '04. I received a highly, high-quality public education from this district. I was a student leader in fellowship of Christian athletes. I brought my Bible to school every single day. I said prayer before every single game with my classmates. Faith was a major part of my high school career. It was my entire identity, if you ask many of my classmates. I was provided that space in this district constitutionally. By doing that, this district also provided a space where I could learn from everybody I meet. They have an entire life, identity, experience, bias, and story that I get the privilege to learn. We still provide this space to our students constitutionally in this district with so many other Christian-based clubs. I see you lobbying with our elected officials, with our governor. So, I ask you for two things. First, will you please speak up for my family and the students in Conroe ISD who all deserve the highest quality public education? One that respects every family in this community. Second, I ask that you find a way to uphold my parental rights, to not have my children sitting in their public classrooms with the Ten Commandments on the wall. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Eiker, and I am a Conroe ISD parent, and I'm here on behalf of CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. CPAC is a new parent-led group created in partnership with the district. Our mission is to connect families, share resources, and make sure the voices of parents of students receiving special education services are heard and valued. As a parent of a child receiving special education services, I'll be honest, our journey has not always been easy. But I've also seen how much better things can be when parents and schools work together. That is why CPAC matters to me. Collaboration is how we create positive change, and it's how we make sure every student gets the support that they need. For CISD families, CPAC can mean a stronger network of support and resources, an open line of communication between parents and leadership, and a chance to collaborate on solutions that help our students succeed. Special needs parents live this every day. We see the small wins, the challenges, and the gaps. When those lived experiences are shared with the district, it helps shape solutions that really work for kids. And I also want to thank you, the board, and our leaders for making space for this kind of partnership. It shows a commitment to listening and growing together. So, tonight, I'd like to invite all of you, as well as parents and caregivers listening at home, families here in the room, and our board members to join us. Come be part of the conversation, share your perspective, and see what we're building together. Our very first in-person meeting will be on September 15th, 6:00 PM, at the Jet Center. You can find details and stay connected at conroeisdcpac.com. Together, we can make sure that every student and every family in Conroe ISD feels supported. Thank you so much for your time and your commitment to all of our students receiving special education services in our district.
Good evening, Board. Nice to see you all, Dr. Landry. I come today to continue my message about transportation. I started in the Woodlands. I now currently am in East County. I'm helping out there, but my base now is in Oak Ridge. I'm doing this because I want to learn more about the district myself and grow myself. But as much as we appreciate everything that you all have done so far, I do want it duly noted that there's a lot of people that have reached out to me because I'm one of the few that's come here saying, "That was great, but my insurance is going to take every bit of my raise." I want to remind that as a bus driver, I work the same hours, the same calendar shifts that teachers do. Please know, teachers behind me, if they're there, I have a sister who's a teacher who would kill me if I said something wrong. I'm not taking away from them. I don't take away from them, the mechanics, the cafeteria people, the front end. But just FYI, in the last two months that I've been up here visiting with you all about this importance, I have been visited in a bathroom, at a grocery store, at a mall. Yes, I've had parents come up and say, "I know you." And that's a scary thing. And their second sentence is, "You're from transportation." And my first thought was, "Oh, good Lord, please tell me I didn't do something wrong or I dropped your child off in the wrong place." That's my first thoughts. Not because I make mistakes, but because your first instinct is. But I have been applauded. I just want you all to know that there are people out here, not right here, but have been out there that have found me and have said, "You're Susan Haji." So, my name's synonymous a lot of places that I didn't know it was. That's kind of a good feeling. But they've also said that I work in the schools, I'm a paraprofessional, I'm just an auxiliary like you. We need more help. So, for my department, we're still asking for help. As I said, I just want to thank you all for what you're doing at this point.
Good evening. I am for the Ten Commandments poster being in the schools. I feel that would be motivational. Those who don't want to read it, don't have to read it. But we had pride flags. We had pride this. We've had transgender issues. We've had pornography books. And you told us, "Well, up out, don't read it, don't do this." Well, the same goes both ways. You don't want to read the poster, don't read the poster. We were fortunate enough to live overseas. We lived in Storied for five years. You move to a country where they don't allow you to do anything. You don't have to read that poster, okay? And different subject, when all of you, when others got elected in November, you heard from board members all over the state, some all over the country. Oh, my gosh, an all-conservative, female board. This is wonderful. How did you do it? The enthusiasm, the excitement. You had boards behind you. It was wonderful. The excitement was there. The issue was now, we don't want our students being on the tablets, on electronics all the time. But your hands are tied. The state is enforcing certain laws and rules that you need to follow. So, why not collaborate with those other districts that have the same values that you do? And let's fight legislation in Austin to change the curriculum, to change things. Because let's face it, after you guys fighting here for the Ten Commandments, wait till they start reading the curriculum for Blue Bonnet. When they see the Bible verses that are in there that are going to be taught, there's going to be more of an uproar. At least this is a poster. They don't have to read it, and they're not being taught. So, I would say, use the power of the board to get together with those people who are so excited for you and what you're capable of doing. Join with them, and let's make legislation change in Austin so we can get away from the tablets and the... I'm not saying technology's not important. It is. But not to the extent that we're going into. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Covey. I am the Policy Director for an organization called Texas Values. We advocate for family issues up at the Texas Capitol, and we were one of the ones that helped write and support and fight for the Ten Commandments law, SB 10 that passed. And I've been in law and policy work, especially constitutional law and policy work, for over 10 years. Been working, had my law degree for about that long as well. I'm actually here just for a couple of reasons. One is to thank you for, you know, your consideration as you move forward for implementation of Senate Bill 10 for the Texas Ten Commandments law. And to say you are on solid constitutional and legal grounds with this. As you know, back in 2022, the Supreme Court had a case called Kennedy v. Bremerton, which was the case of the praying coach on the football field. And they changed the analysis for modern Establishment Clause law in there by getting rid of a test called the lemon test. And now, we are in what's called a History and Traditions Test, which says that when we look at these types of Establishment Clause issues, we are to look at the history of our country and the traditions of our country. And there is no more document that is undeniably ingrained in our country and in our Constitution than the Ten Commandments is. It's just undeniable. Second of all, we want to help with implementation. So, it's my honor just to present to you guys, if I could get it out, this check for $6,000 to go towards purchase of the posters from Texas Values. And hopefully, that will help the implementation go smoother and cover anything if you fall short from these great young people that already donated some of the posters. So, thank you for your time.
Hi, Board. I'm here tonight to speak out against the proposed BDD policy changes in the hiring of Cara Baloo for general counsel. Two weeks ago, we uncovered that Missy's unethical and controversial choice to contract with Tim Davis, which is going to cost our district $100,000 this year. And now, the board wants to revise the BDD policy with the help of TEE to give sole control over all legal representation in our district. This is a huge problem. Last meeting, Missy introduced Cara Baloo and insinuated that if the policy was changed, she would like to contract her to represent our in-house counsel. The only problem is that Cara has multiple conflicts of interest in representing our district. To start, she is a co-founder and board member of TEE, the very organization that is writing the policy that she would benefit from. She stands to benefit directly from this new policy. Along with her role at TEE, Cara has served as a Senior Fellow at the Texas Public Policy Foundation, which advocates for partisan policies like educational vouchers and classical education built on biblical texts. These are in direct conflict with the public education interest. Finally, her company Root Strategy profits from privately consulting with school boards about district reform. These are all significant conflicts of interest, and your ability to ignore them erodes public trust. So, now, let's talk money. Cara currently is under contract with Midland ISD and charges $28,000 a month for her services. And since Conroe is three times larger than that district, we can expect our fees to be exponentially higher. This is not responsible use of taxpayer money. The change in this policy is not about education. It's about controlling the legal narrative and having unchecked power. Our district deserves better. Vote no on the adoption of the new BDD policy written by TEE, and do not hire Cara Baloo. Our district deserves better.
Kristin Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a parent at Conroe ISD, and I have three topics for today. One in the consent agenda, you've got the membership for the next Shack Committee, sort of representing the membership committee, committee, in the Shack. Thank you for reviewing the letter that I believe made it into the board packet. We spent a lot of time looking at all of the applications and trying to make a good pairing and representation across the district, parents, schools, age groups, and teacher representation, staff representation. So, thank you for that consideration. The second topic is SB 10. You've heard a lot about it. I just want to point out that there are different versions of the Ten Commandments. So, as a Catholic, the version that you've received today does not match what we teach, what I teach in Sunday School. So, paying attention to the injunction, delay, thank you. And then, I just want to ditto what Destiny just shared because she said it very well. Thank you.
Aggie Gambino?
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a parent and an advocate to invite CISD Special Education families and district leadership to our very first CPAC meeting, Conroe ISD Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Super excited about this. It's on Monday, September 15th, at 6:00 PM at the Jet Center. CPAC was created to give parents of students receiving special education services a platform for early collaboration, open communication, and shared problem solvings before issues escalate into legal disputes. When I spoke with the former Board President, he shared that the Board was not made aware of our due process case until after it was already filed and external legal counsel for the district was engaged. By then, the Board's only role was to approve a settlement agreement that required the district to pay $50,000 between our attorney fees and the district outside counsel. How might those funds have been used to support students and our teachers? That is exactly why I support the Special Education Legal Cost Transparency Policy that will be discussed later tonight, especially the section that states the district shall seek to resolve disputes with parents prior to incurring legal fees. As elected trustees, the Board has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that public funds are spent wisely. That means having insight into escalating issues between tens of thousands of dollars before they are committed for legal expenses. With CPAC, we hope to be part of the solution. Working alongside the district to surface concerns early builds stronger partnerships between families and leadership. I want to thank Trustee May, President Odenweller, Trustee Nelson, and Dr. Landry for your support in seeing this important work come to fruition. So thank you, and I hope to see all of you at our first CPAC meeting again on Monday, September 15th, 6:00 PM, Jet Center. Thank you.
Susan Skroegs?
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Landry. I just wanted to voice my support of the Ten Commandments posters in the school and in the classrooms. I think it's just great character building. I mean, if you're talking about do not murder, do not lie, honor your parents, those are all good moral character things that every person and child should learn. So I thank you for, for your dedication to carry that forward. And thank you for Texas Values for the nice contribution. A few things I did want to talk about is also the, the excitement I have that there's going to be a silence for a few minutes for prayer or meditation in school. I think that's really a good time for children to understand that they can stop during the day and maybe just have a few minutes to collect themselves and say a prayer. I think the cell phone is a very positive thing. I'm getting a lot of pushback from high schoolers on that. But overall, I think it's going to help them focus more and not be concentrated on what's going on on their phone. I know that parents might have some concerns in getting in touch with their child. Also, the food additives being removed, I think that's a very positive thing for their lunches. We all know that food is brain food. So it will help, I think, in efficacy for learning. Also, the removing of any gender transitioning instruction manuals or books or anything on that and sexually explicit materials, I think that's extremely positive. Taxpayers and people that I talked to do not want their money spent on that kind of materials. Thank you very much. I know you're working very hard, and I appreciate it very much.
Mark Fusca?
President Odenweller, trustees of the board, Dr. Landry. It's been a while. I'm up here speaking in favor of the Special Education Legal Transparency Policy. I know better than most what it's like to have this district's legal counsel weaponized against your family. And when we won our due process suit, that same legal counsel basically blackmailed us and had taken a settlement. Oh, we would be those ones in, in district court fighting. Yeah, I just lost my train of thought. At its core, this is a policy that promotes fiscal transparency. This district spent hundreds of thousands of policies, hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that they could deny my autistic son services that he was legally obligated to, that this district was legally obligated to give him. It would have been much more cost-effective if they'd just have done what was legally right, morally right, and given the support he needed to be successful in school. Instead, this district literally threw a hundreds of thousands of dollars fighting us. But I also see his policy as so much more. It also protects the Board from the district going behind your back and spending millions of taxpayer money without your knowledge or consent. An ex-school Board President told me that due process was just a legal process for the district, and the Board had nothing to do with it. What other legal processes is this district doing behind closed doors without the knowledge or consent of the Board? It's my sincerest hope and prayer that this district becomes an example to the whole state on how special education is supposed to be. This policy is a step in that, this policy is a step in that direction. Imagine a district where advocates have no place, where there was mutual trust between the school and the parents, that they were going to do what's best for the students. This policy is one step closer to all meaning all. My wife is fond of saying at the end of her speech, "Just do better, Conroe ISD." This policy is Conroe ISD doing better. Thank you.
Robert Novcheski?
The Ten Commandments, Exodus 22 through 17. "I am the Lord your God, who brought you out of the land of Egypt, out of the house of bondage. You shall have no other God before me. You shall not make for yourself a carved image or any likeness of anything that is in heaven above, nor that that is in heaven beneath, nor that that is in water of the, under the earth. You shall not bow down to them, nor shall serve them. For I, the Lord your God, am a jealous God, visiting the iniquities of the Father of the children, on the children, to the third and fourth generation of those who hate me, but showing mercy to thousands who have loved me and kept my commandments. You shall not take the name of the Lord your God in vain; for the Lord is, will not hold him guiltless who takes his name in vain. Remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy. Six days you shall labor and do all your work, for the sixth, seventh day is the Sabbath, for the Lord your God. In it you shall do no work, you, nor your son, nor your daughter, nor your male servant, nor your female servant, nor your cattle, nor your stranger who is within your gates. For in the sixth day the Lord made the heavens and the earth, the seas, and all that is in them, and rested the seventh day. Therefore the Lord blessed the Sabbath and made it holy. Honor your Father and your mother, that your days may be long upon the land which the Lord is, the God has given you. You shall not murder. You shall not commit adultery. You shall not steal. You shall not bear fault witness against your neighbor. You shall not covet your neighbor's house. You shall not covet your neighbor's wife, nor his male servants, nor his female servants, nor his ox, nor his donkey, nor anything that is in your neighbor's." As you can see, only four out of the Ten Commandments can relate to civil morals law. The other six only pertain to faithful Christians. And I believe 40% is considered a failing grade. Do not pass go. That is why it is an indoctrination document, something that you learn when becoming a Christian. Is that what you are doing? Indoctrinating our kids in our schools to your beliefs? No, thank you. I decline your offer and will consider it a violation of my parental rights if my kids are forced to see this every day. No, thank you.
Jason Harvey? Sarah Dillard? Kiara McGraw? Jonathan Sines? Edgar Pacheco?
Thank you to all who have addressed the board this evening. All right, we're moving on to item six, Consent Agenda. This next item, I had a request that was made to remove item K RFP 25-06-03, Bus Routing Scheduling Software, from the Consent Agenda to Regular Agenda. And I had a request that was made to add to Regular Agenda items to the Consent Agenda item. Five, Administration. C, Consider Approval of House Bill Early Childhood College and Career Military Readiness Board Adopted Plans and Goals. And Item 6A, Under Teaching and Learning, Consider and Approve the Application Process for Washington High School to Apply for an Optional Flexible School Day Program. Do I have a motion to remove the item stated and add to the item stated, and add the two items previously stated, and accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved. Second. Don't make me repeat that, though.
I didn't. That's why I went through all that. Okay, so that means that Trustee Nelson made the motion. Trustee Horton seconded. And we will take a vote. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right. The motion to accept the Consent Agenda as stated carries. Seven zero. Thank you all very much. Now, we're going to go and pick up the item K RFP dash, or 25-06-03, Bus Routing and Scheduling Software. Dr. Landry? Okay, sorry, getting to that point, because I had to get to it in the Consent Agenda. Dr. Landry, would you like to address this, or would you like me to start by asking the questions that I had?
Well, you could start with questions, and I'll go from there.
Okay. The first thing that I had concerns about was, and I just would like to clarify, that the Smart Tag system that we're using right now does or does not do the routing or help us with our routing of our buses?
It doesn't currently help us. It has a component which would be, we would have to contract separately for an additional cost on top of what we pay for the current student monitoring.
Okay. And also, I know that the trustees, well, there have been a few of us that are working towards the efficiency audits on transportation. If we're going to look at transportation as a whole in general, I understand the need for a better process. But could we possibly postpone looking at this software for a period of time until we can decide where we are on an efficiency audit through transportation?
We would not be opposed to that. Our concern is that, that we have a software package in place. The current software we are using is sunsetting. The business, the company is going out of business. So at the end of this school year, it will no longer be an option for us. And so we would like to have a software in place so that we could at least run it concurrently through the spring, at the very least, so that we can work out the bugs. We would hate to have, try to implement a new routing software on the first day of school next year.
I would too.
And then be a ball of strength. So if, if we could expedite, we would be open, obviously, to an audit process to be more efficient. But with that in mind, yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion items?
Just so I'm clear, you're proposing that we, we continue using the software we are using? Can you?
We would continue. We are going to continue to use the current software through the end of this school year. We were, our hope is to get a new software package firmly in place, and then we would run it kind of as a shadow program, just to make sure that it is running efficiently and that we're working the bugs out while we have a functioning program in place.
And the software we currently have is not associated with the Smart Tag?
It is not, no, ma'am.
Why is the current software sunsetting?
The, my understanding is the company is no longer going to be providing that as a service.
Okay. So we can be assured that the service we're getting until the end of 2026 school, or the school year?
Yes. They have, they have, you know, confirmed that we would have the product and its capabilities through the end of the school year.
Okay.
Any other, oh, go ahead. No, I was just going to say discussion?
So do we have a timeline for the efficiency audit?
We, there's a discussion going on with our Chief Financial Officer and her department on that, and we are going to be looking at that in the next week.
So even if we do a transportation efficiency audit, we will still need this service, though, correct?
We, we potentially would need a service, but wouldn't it be prudent to not spend money right this minute if we can wait and determine what we find out about being more efficient in our transportation department and see what they propose before we invest, if we can get that information in time?
Possibly. It just sounds like we need this no matter what efficiencies we find.
But in the efficiency study, it could be part of that would be that they'd come back with the recommendations of what routes and things that we should do that would be more efficient and cost-saving.
What timeline does the district need to launch this? Obviously, we don't want to do it, like you said, two days before school starts. So what is the last possible date that you would need this to be effective?
We would like it to run at minimum through the spring semester.
And we feel confident that we can do the efficiency audit before then, too?
If not, we're going to have to make the best decision for our district and our students and our staff to be sure that we can do this properly come the school year start.
Okay. Thank you.
It's one other question. Is there, I'm trying to read in here about the expenses. Is there like an initial upfront retainer fee, or are we paying per service right now?
We are paying one company right now for, there is an initiation.
I'm talking about the new one.
The new one would, would be an implementation, implementation cost of a certain amount. And then there would be a yearly maintenance after that.
So depending on what services we need from them, the initial payment is still the same?
Depending on the company or the service that we use. So the company that we have currently that we bid out has a certain cost. There were other companies who did put bids in that were a lot more expensive.
So even if we get a bid right now, we don't need to hire, within how many, how many days do we need to hire after we get the bids in?
Well, we have, we have a bid, and that's what we're coming, coming with.
Okay. So again, if we're just retaining them, are we paying for individual services, or do we just retain them?
If we, if we accepted or approved a bid, then we would need to front, come up with the initiation, implementation cost at the time.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand if the price will be different if we go for this now, or if we wait until after the efficiency audit and realize we don't need as many services, will the price be different? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I'd have to go to the company and see if there's a pro-rata situation, you know, based on the length of time that we would be using it. Instead of starting in October, we'd start in January. We'd have to go back to them and see if that would, that would impact the implementation cost for this particular school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just so, so this is, this service that y'all are suggesting is not connected to Smart Tag. Have we gone to Smart Tag? And do we know the price of the option for this service for them?
To my understanding, Smart Tag did not submit a bid, but their version of the routing software, from our, our estimation, is not robust enough to handle what we need. They are just barely scratching the surface and starting out in this particular field. And they're, you know, we would be the, basically, the pilot program for them. And...
Good to know. Thank you.
Trustee Horton, you have nothing?
No, I, well, I was wondering what we are currently paying with our current provider, and then we have, obviously, the cost of this provider. Would it be the same?
No, it would be an additional cost. So we would be...
Well, I know we paid for two for this year, but moving forward, would it be the same cost?
I don't have the cost of Compass, what we're paying them now. We can...
So, good evening. Currently, we pay Compass $20,000 a year. And we've had them since 2014. Is that accurate? And they haven't raised the price since then. So we've gotten a really good deal, but we've outgrown their software. We need something a little bit more robust, and, and this company will give that to us. And I believe the implementation cost is about $147,000. After that, after we get it implemented, the cost goes down to $57,000 a year, which we've looked at other routing softwares. For what they're giving us, that's the best deal we're going to get.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we either need to have a motion to proceed with the implementation and voting for this software, or we need to, a motion to postpone to the next meeting or to a future time, or whatever other motion you all want to bring.
A motion that we table it until we can get numbers that we can be a little bit more clear and possibly get through our efficiency audit. A second.
Okay, um, so we have trustee Nelson asking to technically postpone the, um, the implementation or the purchase of this software until we get more understanding of the numbers and the efficiency audit. And trustee Duncan with the second. All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. All right. And the motion carries to postpone seven two zero. All right. Dr. Landry, that brings us up to administration and I believe teaching and learning, which would be your superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam President. Uh, we first, we have, um, information regarding the, um, STAR three through eight scores. And I believe that would be Dr. Taylor. Nope, nope, Dr. Winkler. Excuse me.
Good evening, President O'Donwell, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. Last Friday, we received our, um, highly anticipated STAR scores, and we are here to present those to you this evening. Before we begin, we would like to thank Dr. Taylor's team and the school improvement team for all that they do for us, um, over the school year, especially our data guru, Lauren Helfer, who's here in the audience. She's just going to wave, she's so shy. But, um, she puts our numbers together for us, and she helps us throughout the year with her data coaches, and we're very appreciative. Um, so we thank her very much. So just to go over the A through F, um, system, uh, we're going to just remind you of how we're rated. We came, um, up this year with a B. While we're always striving for an A, we're very proud of our B this year being such a large and diverse district as we are. We came up with this B, or the state calculates the B by, um, our domains. Um, domain one is student achievement, and that's basic performance, how students do on the STAR test. Uh, domain two is student, uh, or school progress. Academic growth is what we call domain two A, and it's how a student does in comparison to how they performed last year on the STAR test. And relative performance is how a school does in comparison to a school that's like them in the demographic area of economically disadvantaged. And closing the gaps is how, um, a school does in specific student areas like economically disadvantaged or, um, highly mobile. And for high schools, this also includes their CCMR, their college and career readiness. Um, also for high schools, that's included, um, in domain one. So all of these scores are aggregated together to come up with a rating for a district and for a school. And again, we're very proud of our B rating. This is a look at how we've done for over the years. We get a score just like all of our campuses do. The what-if rating from twenty twenty-two, in twenty twenty-two, they calculated it a little bit different. So the state came back and recalculated twenty twenty-two scores, um, the way we calculate them today. So you can kind of see over time, um, how we've done. Uh, we've stayed a little bit stagnant, but in certain areas over the years, we've gotten a little bit better. So we continue to try to make, um, gains in all of these areas. So here are our STAR scores. Um, today's data that you will see will look a little bit different from what's called taper data that you'll see in January. And the reason is, is because there are some of the scores that aren't calculated in this data. Um, some of the high school scores are not included in this data, and they will be on the taper report. Um, so our alternate scores, which are special education students, or some of our special education students, um, will be included, um, in the taper report. Um, we have a snapshot date, which is the last Friday in October. Those were, are not in these scores, but will be included in the taper. So they'll be slightly different, not hugely different, but, um, in case anyone ever asks you that, um, that's why you'll see a little bit of a difference. Um, we'll also show you, um, our peer districts. We've picked, um, Clear Creek, Cy Fair, Fort Ben, Umbel, Katy, Klein, and Spring Branch. It is definitely not because these districts are easy to compete against. If you look at those names, you know, those are very difficult districts to compete against. But they look like us, they're the same size as us, and, um, they're a good, good competition for us. So, um, we compare ourselves to them. We aggregated those scores together, um, to, um, put together tonight, to put tonight's presentation together for you. So when students are scored, they're going to either, um, not meet grade level, which means they did not pass the STAR test, or fall within three areas of which they passed the STAR test. They can be at the approaches level, which means that they are likely to succeed in the next, um, level, but we are going to have to come up with a targeted intervention plan for them, which means there are skills that they have not mastered yet, and it requires a plan in the next grade level to make sure that we have addressed those skills. The meets grade level is that there are some short-term skills, some small skills that we need to clean up for the next grade level, but they are going to do fine in the next grade level. And then, of course, the masters, we're not going to have to do anything properly for that student they've done, they've done well. So approaches, meets, and masters are all considered, um, passing on the STAR test. So for elementary, um, we're very proud, uh, that's always, I'm always proud of our elementary schools, but we're proud of our elementary schools. And just to, um, give some information, um, about, um, our schools, as you know, we open an elementary school every year, um, this year too. Um, so I, I want to give some of these, um, to you in percentages. Um, this year, for our schools with As and Bs, um, we have eighty-two percent of our, um, elementary score, uh, schools that scored an A or B. Um, that's a six percent increase from last year, which we're very proud of. Um, that's thirty-one of our schools, um, scoring an A or B. We'll have two more schools next year at forty schools. And out of our schools, um, all of our thirty-eight schools, we received seventy distinctions, which we're very proud of. And especially four of our campus, uh, four of our campuses received every distinction that they were eligible for. So we're extremely proud of that. Um, and we had several campuses that were just a point away from, um, moving up to that next level. So, um, they continue to, to strive for that, um, and they're already well on their way to making those plans and putting those plans into action. So for third grade, um, we do, um, a combination when we report of English and Spanish STAR scores together. Um, RLA, if you remember, we used to have the reading test and the writing test, but it's since been combined. So if you look at our third grade reading scores, um, we increased by two points in the masters area, which we're very proud of. That can sometimes be a very difficult task. As always, uh, for most of our, um, STAR scores, we outperform the state, and we're performing right alongside our peer districts in this area. And in third grade math, um, math was one of those areas that during COVID, everyone thought that reading might be the area that suffered, but really, it was math. Um, if you look nationwide, math was, um, the content area that, um, students seemed to struggle with more. We increased three point, uh, three percentage points in the meets area from last year. We increased five points in the masters area, which is huge. It takes a lot to increase five points. It's like moving a cruise ship. Um, we outperformed the state, and we outperformed our peer districts anywhere from three to five percentage points, um, depending on the categories, that we're extremely proud of that. And in fourth grade, uh, we increased in the meets by three percentage points, outperformed the state, and outperformed our peer districts in the meets by three percent and slightly in the masters, but we still outperformed them. So I just wanted to make sure I got that in there. And in fourth grade math, um, we had a three-point gain in masters, um, which again is, is huge. We outperformed the state again, and we outperformed our peer district in approaches and, and the meets by six points and the masters by, by five points. So in every area in elementary, we had plus signs. So, or we performed as we did last year, but I'm very proud of the elementary campuses and how they did. Are there any questions about elementary or just how STAR scores are calculated in general? Okay, well, I will hand it over to Dr. Kuplaski.
Good evening, President O'Donwell, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. So I will show you our middle school, which is encompassing of fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So there are eighteen campuses, um, eleven intermediate, and seven junior high schools. And again, just like Dr. Winkler said, um, in comparing the peer districts, um, honestly, in comparing every single score for every single grade level, every content area, um, we are at or above most of the districts except for really one generally throughout the entire, um, comparison. So looking here at reading language arts, you can see that we are close to our peer group. I'm, I'm looking at the one, two, three, four. The fifth column is what we're comparing to the first column on the left. So, um, in looking at that comparison, you can see that we're very close in reading language arts. Dr. Winkler pointed out math as an area that we focus on that suffered during COVID times. And this is an area that, uh, we want to definitely highlight. I want to talk a little bit more about fifth grade math because this is the very first time that students have a, um, forty-one percent increase in the, um, tech-enhanced questions. So these are the multi-step questions. These are the, um, you can answer more than one, um, on those tech-enhanced questions. So it's the one test in the content area of all grades tested has the most tech-enhanced questions. And, uh, fifth grade math STAR is extremely challenging. You can see that we are very, um, we can compare to our, our peer districts in that. But I wanted to note, too, that the rigor level increases dramatically. Um, we did, um, uh, induct a new problem-solving method, which is the difference in third, fourth, to fifth for our teachers, that all teachers were trained in the May for the problem-solving component, and it's implemented this school year. And, um, you know, we are definitely working on math there. Um, looking at science, this is the very first time children are tested on a STAR for science. The fifth grade science STAR includes, um, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade skills. And think about all the families who move here and throughout, um, you know, their, their child's education, and maybe they missed being in Texas in second, third, and fourth. And they're still tested on those skills. So it is very challenging for fifth grade science teachers to, um, to catch kids up oftentimes if they are, are new to our area or new to Texas. You can see, though, in our comparison group, how we compare, um, approaches, seventy-five percent there, and then also, um, in the, uh, meets higher and masters as well. So we're very proud of that. Um, I will say as well that the science STAR has the highest passing rate of all STAR tests that we administer, that the state administers. So just keep that in mind as well. So here is sixth grade language arts. You can see comparing peer districts. We, um, outperform in all areas in approaches, meets, and masters. And sixth grade math STAR, here are the comparisons. We well perform above our peer districts. Reading language arts, very close to our peer districts. This is the one area I want to focus on the most. Okay? So I want you to be aware that for seventh grade math, a seventh grader can be in four different levels of math class. They can be in level seventh grade math, they can be in pre-algebra, which is eighth grade math, they can be in algebra one, which is ninth grade math, they also can be in geometry, which is tenth grade math. So our children, when they are placed in seventh grade, they're in the right class at the right time, and if a child is receiving the majority of their teaks in that particular content area for that grade, they're tested for that grade. So we have seventh graders who potentially are in, uh, pre-algebra. In fact, um, last year, we had two thousand two hundred ninety-seven seventh graders who took the eighth grade STAR last year. That was in May of twenty twenty-five. This year, we have two thousand four hundred and eighteen children enrolled who are seventh graders taking pre-algebra. So it increased a little over a hundred, um, but they are in the right class at the right time. So obviously, our scores will be different based on the four different math levels for seventh grade. You can see here that our children who took the seventh grade math STAR did perform less than the peer districts. But it depends on the scope and sequence and the curriculum for each district's content. So you'll notice a difference in eighth grade, I'll show you here in just a second, because eighth grade's going to look different. So, um, I also want to point out, too, for seventh grade math STAR, um, our teaching and learning department, along with, um, Dr. Baron, the secondary math coordinator, he worked really hard this summer, and every single seventh grade math teacher partici- participated in staff development on July twenty-eighth or August the eighth. And, um, they're also going to have continuing staff development in September, November, and February to address seventh grade math, and they're focusing on high priority standards. All right. Here is language arts for eighth grade, and you can see very close to our peer districts. And then here's eighth grade math STAR. I told you it would look different than seventh grade. Um, again, we're talking about children who are in pre-algebra, taking, um, this particular content area. So we outperform peer districts as opposed to seventh grade. Again, depending on what their scope and sequence looks like and how they place their children. Okay. And here is eighth grade science STAR, and you can see we're very close to our peer districts. Another one to, um, I want to point out just a little bit more about eighth grade social studies. This is the very first time children take a social studies exam, first time. So here are our results. You see the, the approaches and the meets and the masters. But you can be assured that by the time they take similar skills, again, for end-of-course exam, so last year's May twenty twenty-five results for end-of-course, um, exam for high school was ninety-seven percent. So they're introduced to skills, US history in fifth grade, they are taught, again, US history skills in eighth grade and tested in eighth grade, but then, um, for graduation, it's ninety-seven percent. And people will say that, that the eighth grade social studies STAR is probably arguably the hardest test that is administered at the state level. And I believe that is it. Any questions about middle school results? Righty, thank you. I do want to point out, if I could, just for a minute, Dr. Morel, I apologize. I wanted to add that we are very proud, too, of our, um, our middle schools' ratings and the fact that we had sixty-seven percent of our schools earn at least, um, one distinction. We had sixty-seven percent, um, increase from, um, their rating from last year to this year, um, which is great. And we had, um, two of the schools earned a hundred percent of distinctions that they, um, were eligible for. Um, sixty, sixty-one percent of them earned at least one distinction, which again, it's comparing that school to others statewide that are similar to that demographic makeup. So very proud of our, our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kuplaski. We're excited about your leadership.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I get to, to have the fortunate privilege of talking about high school and the end-of-course exams. So it kind of switches a little bit from STAR to end-of-course. Give a little bit of background, a student, uh, that's going through high school will take three end-of-course exams in the, uh, their freshman year, one exam in their sophomore year, and then one in their junior year. Um, very proud of our high schools. Uh, we had, out of our high schools, we had seventy-five percent of our high schools out of eight, out of the eight campuses, uh, combined that were an A or a B. And so we're really excited about that and looking for a lot of growth in, in all of our schools. I think they have some room. Uh, one of the big, um, factors that impacts high schools more at, at their level is the CCMR. Um, it comes into a big play for high schools and presents another challenge with getting, making sure students are college certification, military ready. So the end-of-course exam for English one, uh, you will see that, uh, our students held their own with our peer districts, uh, were above the state, um, across the board, not only in, uh, approaches, but meets and masters. The English two end-of-course exam, uh, held, uh, right in there, a little slightly above, um, our peer districts. What we were excited about is we maintained where you saw our peer districts dropped three percentage points. So, uh, very excited about that. Um, we held in our meets and our masters and continued, well, we improved there, but compared to our, uh, comparison district, we still outperformed. Algebra one scores, um, just as, uh, um, just as Dr. Kuplaski was just talking, um, when you get to a high school, you have multiple levels of math. So you have level algebra one, uh, that is being taken in ninth grade, but then other students have already taken that exam. So when she talks, the twenty-three-hundred, twenty-four-hundred students that are taking algebra or geometry in, in junior high, those do not count in, in these scores as well. It's just what they take at that school. So as we look at algebra one, uh, we're slightly lower than our peer districts, um, but well above the state. Um, same thing with meets, uh, we keep trying to close that gap, um, slowly but surely. And then our masters as well. Our biology end-of-course exam, we perform a little bit better than our peer groups, um, both in approaches, meets, and masters. And. both in approaches, meets, and masters, and as well, well above in the state. And then the last exam, our US history, our US history is above our peer groups as well as the state in all three categories. So it's a very nice year, still working on Algebra one. It is probably the biggest challenge exam, but we're going to continue to improve as principals work through their specific plans to improve in those areas. Any questions about high schools?
I just wanted to state in general, it's nice to hear from our assistant superintendents to go, you know, from elementary, middle to high school. So thank you guys for your presentations, and a huge kudos to the district for our accountability rating for this year. I'm really proud of everyone and excited for the next year, so.
Okay. So Madam President, we'd like to bring for your consideration the twenty-two-five, twenty-two six student code of conduct as presented by Dr. Merle.
President, all our members of the board, Dr. Landry, it is my privilege to be before you tonight, but as was requested the other day, that we would like a quick little legal update and overview of the impact of the new laws that have gone into place and how they impact our campuses. First of all, some of them impact the student code of conduct, and others impact the phone calls and emails that you get are related to that. So I am going to go through this fairly quick and highlight several of the bills. It's not all of them. You'll probably get a more comprehensive review at different times as we get more information. So first of all, some of the objectives is talking a little bit about time and patience with as we implement new laws, major themes that were in educational law during this session, and the laws and our CISD response at this point. So first of all, the eighty-ninth legislature is we need time and patience. There's a large number of educational bills that were passed. We've had about seven weeks now to sort through all of the bills, and there's a lot of them. And some of them, we're waiting on TEA for interpretation on the bills, so they give us a little bit more direction as that's necessary, and they keep coming out almost daily with new updates that have been very helpful. Also, obtaining legal counsel, interpretation of bills, and I believe y'all will hear more of that in the coming days. And we're giving campuses and guidance and direction as soon as possible, and that's our goal, is to give as much guidance as we can to help our principals do their job, help our teachers do theirs. Some of the bills, and I'll point those out, that we were very early in the stages, and we used our own interpretation because it involved data collection, and it's a lot easier prior to school than once school starts, so we wanted to help. So first of all, the major themes were definitely parent rights, teacher rights, social transitioning, and then behavior expectations in the classroom. Those were some of the major, four major themes that you saw throughout a lot of bills. So first of all, House Bill five-seventy-one, and this deals with criminal behavior by an employee, and really it comes down to reporting it to HR, assistant superintendent, and the superintendent within forty-eight hours. And those behaviors include state jail felonies, inappropriate relationships, inappropriate communication, and inappropriate boundaries. Our CISD response has really not changed. We're seeing some of these laws, especially similar to this one, that it has been a standard of Conroe ISD normally. That has been our standard for a long period of time. The only difference is now there's a law. And so some other districts may have to be adjusting. We're not. We're just going to continue to do what we normally do. The first preemptive strike that we have to help with this is vector solutions. Vector solutions is online training that helps our teachers and reminds them of their obligations to keep students safe, appropriate relationships, and so on. And the biggest thing is we ask our teachers and our staffs to maintain professionalism and foster positive relationships and communication, as well as if you suspect something or know something is occurring, you have an obligation to report it and report it immediately. House Bill five-seventy-one continued, it's the same law, and this revolves around CPS. When you have a student that you feel has been abused, neglected, or the other items up there, then now that has changed in the reporting period. The reporting period used to be within forty-eight hours, now it is down to twenty-four hours, which impacts how fast your staff moves and works through a situation. They, what we have asked is no matter what, if every employee has to report it first of all, so if you know about it, you have to report it. You cannot do a group report any longer. That used to be acceptable. Now, each individual person that's aware must report it to CPS within twenty-four hours. We ask that our employee, no matter who they are, they're the ones that actually call or complete the online CPS report within that twenty-four hour period. They also, with administration, will contact CISD police immediately and get them involved to help them, and they will help us foster that relationship with outside law enforcement agencies and take care of the child as best we can.
Dr. Merle, I have a question regarding that last bullet point, the reporting to outside law enforcement. Is it, I thought it was necessary for that to be done directly, no matter what. It says as necessary. I thought it was required.
So one thing that we have, we have talked about in clarification, and it goes with CPS reports. When we have filed, when we file CPS reports, it goes, the investigator looks at where the, where the offense occurred. So if it occurred off-campus, park, home, somewhere else, that has gone to outside law enforcement agencies, so either Montgomery County Sheriff's or Conroe PD. If it has happened on school grounds, they have referred it to our police department. So that's why we involve CISD police. They help us navigate that, but we're going to notify local law enforcement no matter what, so they're aware of the situation. So we're just, it's a way to coordinate everybody, so all police agency, all law enforcement agencies are involved in the process.
Right, so it's always necessary?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify.
Senate Bill twelve, Senate Bill twelve removes DEI, prohibits social transitioning. It has a health and mental health services permission form. This is where I was talking about, we were pretty early in the process in making sure that we put these forms out there because it was data collection. So if you completed the enrollment verification, or used to be InfoSnap, then you saw those questions on there about receiving health services from the nurse or staff member, or the information about mental health services. So, and then we also had, if you suspect criminal activity, complaint process is redefined, the parent conference opportunities, and then certain clubs are removed and clubs are having club consent. So CISD response is diversity, equity, inclusion has been removed, as the board took measures on that within policy, but also within our campuses. It prohibits assisting with social transitioning in any way, and then the mental health services and health services are the parent permission form or information sheet that went out and through the enrollment verification. Also in Senate Bill twelve, if you suspect a student of criminal activity, mental, emotional, physical well-being, you must report that to the parents within twenty-four hours. So if you suspect something, you say something. The complaints, the timelines expanded, district complaints, it could expand our options to three or four complaint levels. I think that's something that the board will decide on at some point, but it does direct the level one complaint back to the principal unless the principal is identified in the complaint. To, you have to offer two in-person parent conference opportunities for all students. That does become a challenge at the secondary level, when each teacher has a hundred and fifty, roughly a hundred and fifty-plus students, and there's seven of them. But we are going to make those offerings in these student handbooks, so that they're aware that that is an option and that they can contact the school for those opportunities. Clubs, we have moved the sexual orientation or gender identity clubs, and now permission forms have to be signed by the parent to allow their student to participate in clubs. The high schools was actually made active today, so there's a high school list of all the clubs that they offer, that they can go in and parents can check however many clubs they want, hit submit, one-stop-shop form. House Bill six is a formal removal of a student, written permission from a teacher to return to class. It deals with nicotine vapes, it deals with the campus behavior coordinator, ISS, OSS, DAEP, and expulsion. So this was where a bulk of the changes were from, for the student code of conduct. You have a, they revised the formal removal of a, from a class by a teacher. This is where a student, or a teacher can remove a student for their behavior because it's either been persistent and disruptive to other, to the teacher being able to instruct the class, or the learning of other students. The steps, there's a whole process that we have in place that's outlined in chapter thirty-seven of the education code that outlines what you do in the plan. A reentry, you try a reentry plan first, and hopefully everybody agrees to the reentry plan, and the teacher allows the student to return to class. If not, then that would go to a placement committee, and that they would review the situation and make an appropriate decision on the placement of the child. Change in nicotine vapes. Nicotine vapes were a mandatory DAEP placement. Now they are a discretionary alternative, discipline, alternative educational placement. The TEA is still allowing an on-campus DAEP, so that's what we did in the previous two years, is if a student was caught with a nicotine vape, it was a mandatory DAEP placement. If we sent all of those to the regular DAEP, we'd have no room for anything else. So what we did do was adjust that. The TEA allowed an adjustment to house an on-campus DAEP, operated just like in-school suspension, and we utilize that for usually a three-to-five-day assignment. So we are still allowed to use the on-campus DAEP alternative, which is what we highly advise our campuses to do, because we can limit that out-of-class placement for three to five days for a nicotine vape. Otherwise, it is required and mandated by law, if you do not place them in a DAEP, you must do a required ten-day ISS placement. So we feel like the discretionary DAEP would be a better alternative for our kids. We would use the ten days if there's been other issues and problems that we need to address.
Sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, ma'am.
So before HB six, could teachers still remove students from the classroom, or what exactly changed with that specific point?
It's just, the biggest change in that policy, in that law, is written permission to return to class. So a teacher, you can't, before, a teacher just said, yes, they can come back. Well, now you have to actually get it in writing that, yes, they have to come, they, yes, they can come back. There are a few other little minor adjustments to the process, but relatively, chapter thirty-seven and this part of the process has been around for twenty-plus years. We actually, our former council and myself wrote the actual guidelines to begin with about twenty-three years ago, twenty-four years ago, when it went into play. So we've been revising those currently, the process, to give direction to principals. So Senate Bill twelve continued, if you suspect a student of criminal activity, mental, emotional, covered that. Complaints, oh, sorry. So campus behavior coordinator, before you had to have a campus behavior coordinator, but they really didn't define their roles or responsibilities. So now you have, they're part of the threat assessment team, but they also monitor all behavior and report dangerous situations that they uncover. So they're looking at the discipline consequences, making sure that they're remaining consistent and trying to curtail behavior. OSS is limited to three days, that's not a change, that is still the same as it has been, but they do define ISS. ISS was not defined in the student code of conduct before, but now they define it, and you also have unlimited days in ISS, and that's days in a row. You could put a student in for a hundred days if you wanted to. The only requirement is that every ten days that goes by, you have to review their placement and assure that that placement is still appropriate for that student. So they did take off the cap. I will tell you that as far as we go, and most of this is because of the high school level, if they want to go beyond seven days, they need to contact their assistant superintendent and discuss the situation, because we do not want to put students in ISS any longer than we have to.
Should that be written in our student code of conduct, that they need to contact?
That is not in the, it's not written in there because that's more of a process that we're following. Yes. So the student code of conduct really sticks with the law.
Did you say seven or ten days? Sorry, I didn't.
So we're trying to stay less, seven days or less in ISS, in an ISS assignment. That doesn't mean we won't go over that, but it's going to have to be a discussion with the assistant superintendent.
Thank you.
Dr. Merle, I have a couple of, hi, over here, HB six questions. So when we were out campaigning, we heard over and over and over again from all teachers that behavior was a significant issue. And we heard from a lot of elementary teachers that this was a significant issue. Do you believe that HB six is going to help relieve some of these issues for our teachers?
I think there's, some of the laws are going to help identify probably more severe behaviors at an earlier time where other interventions might be appropriate and help that student control their behavior. But the reality too with all of this is that when you have an issue with a student and a teacher removes a student, that student still has to be somewhere. So they're going to go into another class. So the key to this is the early intervention, whatever it is, and providing that intervention to hopefully get the parents on board, the student's behavior corrected, and then a coordinated plan with the administrative team and the teachers to help that student's behavior improve. So I think it will help where teachers documented and documented and documented over and over before they sent that student to get help. It may speed that process up a little bit to get that student a little bit more help quicker.
I would like a deeper dive of our behavior policy and plan, and I would like to really take a deep look at this. Like I was just looking at the HB six landing site for TEA, and there is an overview of school discipline for parents document that the district should be providing to all parents, because I think adding parents into, are you about to talk about that? Sorry.
No, but I'm glad you brought it up.
Okay.
It is, it's coming. It's with our graphics department right now, and they're working on that document so we can get that out to principals, and so that can beat that September first deadline.
Will that be a hard copy that goes out to?
We will put it on the website, we'll give it to the principals to put in their newsletter to send out. They can send it out as an attachment or a link. We will probably send, I believe we were talking about the lower levels, the elementary levels, putting it in their folders to go home, so that they have a hard copy. If it's high school students, it never makes it home. It's in the bottom of the backpack somewhere.
Understood, yes, that is a difference. Is there a CBC at every campus?
Yes, there is a, one individual that is identified as a CBC, and they are listed on that school's website. We're still working on getting those all up, and we haven't gone through and checked every single one. We're giving the campuses time to get it done, but they were given an example of what it says, as well as the contact information for that administrator, and it has, does have to be an administrator.
And are they're typically wearing multiple hats? It's not just, not just focused on?
Typically, so if you kind of work down, the associate principal for operations would tend to be the person at the high school level. The associate principal at the junior highs is most likely that person. And then when you get into the elementary levels, I would suspect it's going to be the assistant principal, maybe the principal at times. Is that right, assistant principal? So assistant principal.
One of the things that I like, Dr. Merle, in here is that it's saying a single person at each campus.
Correct.
The reason why I feel like that's important, but I also have concerns about it, is that person is going to have, excuse me, the knowledge on a student more consistently than it person is going to have, excuse me, the knowledge on a student more consistently than it going to different people or places. And so sometimes it doesn't, we don't get a clear record of what's happening or a relationship established with a student who's got behavioral issues. And that single person is a great, that's a great thing that's in the, in our deal and through HB six. But my concern is that person juggling that, I mean, because we, we do have, we're not alone. I'm not speaking Conroe is a bad thing. I'm just saying across the state, across the country, we're seeing massive discipline issues. And I'm concerned, I think we need to keep an eye on that, that we definitely monitor the, the caseload, the workload, that we are taking this situation into hand and determining if we've got enough people hand. It says a single person, but is that single person, our campuses are huge.
So, so let me clarify a little bit on that. So one person is labeled as a CBC, but as you deal with student behavior, you, it's the campus behavior coordinator or other appropriate administrator can assist them. So you're still going to see the setup very similar, that the assistant principals are handling a bulk of the behavior. But then as the behavior becomes more serious or it gets to a removal, then the CBC stepping in and helping and assisting with that. They're always going to be working collaboratively with their whole administrative staff while they implement that. The bigger job for the CBC is to sit there and monitor the discipline and the, the consequences that are being administered to, to try to make sure we're being consistent and fair to our students and giving opportunity when it's deserved and, and hopefully encouraging improvement in behavior and then brainstorming different ideas to remediate behavior.
I, I think that's key. Consistency and across the board and someone that's monitoring that. I'm with trustee May, I think almost all of us are in agreement when it's that our teachers are, are, and I know you've heard it, I'm not saying anything that, but our teachers desperately are not feeling the support and being heard. They are not, and we want to check back on this. We want to make sure that we evaluate. We don't wait until it gets, till January and we're not seeing how it's working and then the teachers have lost a semester with instructional, good quality instructional time, that they're not burnt out by the time we get to Christmas. I just would like for us to definitely look at this more and evaluate things and see how it's going.
And I do think at the elementary level, you get into a little bit more challenging situation because you have less administrators. High school, junior high, you have more administrators, the fewer you have, they're trying to manage both monitoring and dealing with the students becomes a little bit more of a challenge.
Yes, I would agree.
It's a smaller volume, but.
But if we will focus on getting that elementary, these are the boundaries, these are the guidelines, these are acceptable behaviors in school when they're in elementary, pre-K, K through four. By the time they get to fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, they've already had some structure established better and, and consistency at that level and focus there, kind of like we're recognizing in RLA or math early on. The more we can get that structured in place and support those teachers and make sure we have a process in place to help them, that will then alleviate hopefully theoretically more down the road.
Right.
And staying on the topic of House Bill six and kind of piggybacking off of that, I'm, I want to ask a clarifying question. It says a student may not return to class without the teacher's written consent, which we learned is new, unless the placement review committee determines that the set, setting is the best or only alternative. So, you know, in that sense, it kind of just, it's almost, to me, seems like for show, you know?
Well, to a point. It, it, it goes through that process, but it gives first of all, the student due process because if the teacher doesn't want them back, they can appeal that decision.
Well, so that's the clarifying question I have. Is the committee the same thing as the conference? It's now being offered to the teacher?
It is not, so there's two parts to it. So the first part is a parent, teacher, student, and administrator conference that you have to hold within three days or it says schedule within three days. The goal is to hold it within three days. So you sit down and you discuss the, the teacher explains the behaviors and then you work together and collaboratively develop a return to class plan. And if you can develop the return to class plan, then the teacher and everybody is in agreement, then the teacher would.
So the teacher is not part of the review committee on whether or not that student can return to class?
No, in that conference, return to class plan involves the teacher.
Just the plan, okay.
Teacher, parent, student, and administrator. So you work to develop a plan to help that student be successful in class and the goal is for the teacher to sign and give you written permission to return that student to their class. If that doesn't work out and the parent wants to appeal the removal, then that's when the placement committee comes into place. And the placement committee is made up of two elected teachers, usually off of the campus improvement team, and one professional employee selected by the principal. And that review committee looks at all of the information and makes a determination of the appropriate placement for that child. Now sometimes you get into situations where there is no alternative. So for example, you have a resource class and it's the only resource class for that's, for that grade level or for that subject area, then they would be play, then you have no choice but to return that student to that placement. There's only a couple of situations where it involves the assault or aggravated assault of the teacher where you would have to look at other alternatives that might be off campus at another, at another campus. Other than that, you're determining what that appropriate placement is for that student.
So is this strengthening protection for the teacher in any way or is this kind of what was already happening?
That part, the placement committee part was already in place before. I will tell you over the chapter thirty-seven removal, formal removals that I've experienced over twenty-six years, I had to, twenty-six years, make a request. And then when they looked at the process, they had to supply before documentation of what they had done to try to help with the behavior in the classroom. When they saw what their role was and what their part was, they withdrew both of them because they had not done everything that they needed to do as a classroom teacher to help that student improve, including contacting the parent, parent, teacher conference.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that help?
It does, I'm, it does sound like maybe a lot of the same.
It, it, it's, it's a process, but you know, what, what, what you will see, I believe, is the earlier identification of students that are, have challenging behaviors that we need to correct and hopefully we can meet with parents and develop a good plan.
I just really like to see that we're, we're standing behind teachers if they do have that request, that they're very supportive in that and that they are a primary consideration in any of these situations.
And I think that's what it does do is early on in the process, if a teacher's having problems, the most important thing you can do is sit down with the, the teacher, the parent, the student, and administrator and sit down, talk about the behaviors and what are we going to do to help that student be successful in class? If we're doing those things early on, then the problems reduce. I think some of the things that occur as a teacher tries to, and we have great teachers and so this is common. I was just as guilty as you're, you're an advocate for students. So you don't want to send them to the office. You don't want them to be in trouble. So you work with them and you bend over backwards to try to help them be successful and it works for a little while and then goes back and, back and forth and you keep working with it and then you get twelve weeks into school and you've had enough right now and now you start dealing with it where a parent may not have been involved or administrator may not have been involved. So I think you will see that timeline pushed up and maybe intervene earlier when it's smaller behaviors and you're able to fix those. Does that make sense? I hope that helps.
Yeah, I have a comment really. I think the intent, I want to make sure the intent of House Bill six doesn't get lost in our process. Because it sounds to me like we're using the same process that's been in place for twenty-plus years, I think you said.
Well, except for the, except for the beginning part, which is the initial identification and the initial removal of the student from class.
Right, but then the action that happens, I mean, that's always been in place. A teacher could send a child to the, to the office, but I think the process is what I want to focus on and what I want to make sure we're not losing the intent of what this bill is, is, is the outcome is wanting where the teacher has a say and the teacher doesn't have to accept the child back into the classroom. So the process sounds to me like since it's been established, it, it may require some tweaking so that we can ensure that teacher more protection in saying that the child not return to class, even if all parties involved otherwise may suggest that the child can. I don't, I don't see that happening.
Well, so, so just to speak on that real quick, because I know we want to get, get going here, but on the TEA put out guidance at the end of last week on this specifically. And there is a flow chart that involves the whole process from removal of a student all the way to the end through the placement committee. So I took that flow chart today and I adjusted everything to meet that flow chart and what it says and what it, what it says to do and follow that all the way through. So it is exactly what the interpretation of the law, at least by TEA, is saying to do.
So did it, did it remotely mirror our existing procedure or did you have to?
There's some similarities. The similarities.
Was there a lot of overhaul?
This, it was quite a bit of overhaul at the beginning. The placement committee stays relatively the same. There's a few little minor changes, but it really stays the same. But the initial removal and the behavior reentered, the return to class process is totally different. How that operates, how that works is totally different. And then it, it, it opens up the door for a lot of communication with the teacher, the parent, the student, which is an important piece of that, and then having an administrator help facilitate that. So the teacher definitely has a lot more say in what happens and what goes on and what those desired behaviors are upfront to address the behavior so hopefully we don't get to the second part of that.
Okay, and just second, trustee Odenmuller's point or suggestion is I want to follow up on this in a few months and make sure with the teachers that we're getting the results that were intended.
And when we have all the documents completed, we'll be happy to share those with y'all so y'all can see, see what those look like.
Good.
Oh, sorry, I don't want to forget the big one. House Bill fourteen eighty-one, we all know about that one and.
High schoolers are thrilled about this one.
They, they are and aren't. You know, I've heard some kids were excited because they actually made it through the day without looking at their phone and they didn't think they could do it. So this follows not only our board policy, but state law. So that information is outlined. I think y'all are pretty familiar with that. The picture of the week was a, at the Woodlands High School at lunch, a student brought an old phone and was on his phone at lunch and it was old timey. We don't think he knew how to dial.
Was it rotary?
But he had the dial phone. It was, it was great.
But nobody could take a picture of it.
We got a great laugh. He made, he made his point, but it lightened the mood.
It was ingrained in their mind is what it was.
Okay, and the last one?
Can I stop you really quickly?
Sure.
I do have a clarifying question about your previous slide. For electronic devices, this is just clarifying, I may or may not have some high schoolers in my house, but I don't see laptops listed under electronic devices. Can we clarify that? I don't know if Kara can, can shed light on that?
So that, that is more the tablets, tablets, laptops were part of that because they could be communication devices with texting and all of that.
Tablets and you look up as an iPad.
Well, you have tablets and then some laptops are, because they fold over, considered tablets as well. The guidance, I don't know if you have any additional guidance on that topic?
I would just say the specific, the specific law says and what it's getting at is any device capable of telecommunication or digital communication. So it really, there's not a, probably a complete list of all devices that can do it, but if it's capable of that, it is not supposed to be out during the school day at all. So if there's a laptop and it's presumably able to do telecommunication or digital communication, then it's not allowed under Texas law. On the flip side, if there's devices that are disabled or devices that are provided by the school system itself, those are allowed.
So we actually have one out there right now that is a, similar to a tablet, but it is not Wi-Fi capable or internet capable.
Is it possible to disable?
And they take notes on it. So that would be an appropriate one because they have no access to social media, internet, or anything along those lines.
Is it possible to disable that on a person's personal laptop within the district, like through their Wi-Fi or SSO?
You can disable it whether it stays that way or not would not be.
My concern is like the dual credit students who are going through courses with Lone Star and, and needing to do notes and assignments.
There's definitely some challenges with it, especially some of your upper level students that rely on that technology.
Who are trying to get into colleges and I'm concerned about that.
You know, the, the goal still goes with our technology plan and implementing that through this fall. Hopefully we'll get very close to that where we're putting enough devices in classrooms that will solve that problem. I know it's a, it's a process though.
And so when, what, what's the timeline for that?
That would be a Dr. Lambert question.
Oh, Dr. Lambert, okay.
And Dr. Lambert's back here.
So we completed a technology audit of every campus this summer. We're finishing up now and we're building plans to roll out the device standard as we speak. The hope, very strong hope is that by January that will be in place everywhere, but it's all going to depend on how quickly we can purchase, how quickly we can build those plans, and how quickly the staff we have can, can set up devices to get to campuses and get them delivered. But we've done quite a bit of things, including work with vendors to direct ship to campuses rather than to ship to warehouse once devices are set up. So we're, we're moving quickly. Again, my hope is January, but I can't make that promise to you as I, as I stand here right now that every campus will be impacted. I will tell you that high schools are our priority in this process just because of the nature of how they function, the uses of devices and dual credit and advanced courses as well.
So I'm sorry, could you tell me what the goal is that we're meeting in January? Are we talking every student having a Chromebook or what, where, where are we at with that?
The, the classroom device standard right now is that every elementary classroom, K through, pre-K through one would have twenty-two iPads in those classrooms. In second through fourth grade, there would be twenty-two Chromebooks in each classroom. In intermediate, so fifth and sixth grade, there would be twenty-five devices, Chromebooks in each classroom. And then at the secondary level, we would do in instructional spaces, I believe that number is thirty in each instructional space so that we'd essentially have the ability to be one-to-one within a classroom, but not sending devices home with students, except the virtual school is a different, different discussion on that, on that front. But essentially within a classroom, students would be, be one-to-one, but not be assigned a device to take home.
And so in the meantime, between now and January one where we're hoping to meet this goal, what are we doing as a district to help our high schoolers particularly who maybe are in dual credit or AP or even just wanting to just get ahead with their schoolwork? Are we doing more paper assignments and less canvas assignments or what, what are we doing to help until we meet that goal in January?
So on the, on the, the technology side, many of our campuses are very close to that ratio already. Speaking out of College Park, there's almost that number of devices in the building right now. Instructionally, I would, I would defer to Dr. Morel on that question.
Thank you.
So, so when we started looking at inventory last spring, our high schools were probably in the best shape overall. There are a few holes that we need to fill in, but since that's the priority, those would be taken care of relatively quick. And the places that you don't have a device is like, for example, band hall, orchestra room, choir room. They have access to a cart of devices, but not actually one for each classroom. So when we talk instructional spaces, it's where you could put any class and teach the class. So they're not far off. They probably have the same number of devices on campus that they have students, but they're not necessarily all in the right spots. So some moving of those devices and adding some devices are going to create that plan pretty quick.
So are we doing, to supplement, are we doing more paper assignments versus canvas assignments for these students that don't have access to a laptop or a Chrome card?
What's nice, what's nice are the teachers are working collaboratively and some are using their set today, but not necessarily tomorrow. And they're looking at their instructional strategies and they're able to get devices into their classroom when they need it, if they happen to not have them. We also have, there's a couple of other devices like in an LGI or a library that they can always get to come to their classroom that others are sharing in the time being. But there was a definitely a priority of devices in your four core areas. If one of the core areas was slighted a little bit, it was math, I don't know why, but for some reason, teachers love you to do it all on paper and show your work, right?
Well, I, I, that's definitely not the update I'm getting. So I'd love to chat more with you offline about how we can, I mean, I'm, I can just tell you, I'm hearing kids are playing Uno in class because they don't have anything to do. There's nothing left to do. I'm hearing tables are moved to sides so they can play volleyball because they can't use their computers to just do work or log into Canvas and work on an assignment. So.
I, I did not see the final inventory, but that was not what the inventory indicated in the spring.
So is the conclusion I'm drawing correct that we're not assigning, we're not able to do assignments other than with electronic devices?
No, we can do, we can do other assignments. We can do paper assignments. There's a variety of ways that they're doing assignments in class. It's just addressing the question was, you know, we're using Canvas, we're using paper assignments, we're using, you know, conversation and different instructional strategies to help.
Right. So as long as that's occurring.
So there, there's a lot of different techniques that are being used. And that's why in a classroom, the classroom next door may be doing one way. The other one may be approaching it a different way. And so you can share devices until we get to the full standard. So it's just how teachers utilize it.
In order to conduct these classes and, and, and teach these lessons, we don't require a device per se.
For, for a high percentage, there are some things that we've moved to digital because it's easier. But it doesn't mean that we can't use a paper, paper to make it happen if we need to. Yeah, it's the good old fashioned way, right?
Is the goal to have a Chrome card in every classroom besides like fine arts and PE?
Correct.
Even at the junior high levels, is that the goal for January, you said, is the timeline?
Correct. That's, that's what the target was. I know when I was working on it and it sounds like it's carried over with the inventory. That, that, that looked reasonable, a reasonable goal.
Okay. Yeah. Again, I would just preface that in the meantime, until we hit that goal in January that you mentioned, that teachers are really working with the students to ensure that they are getting the things that they need to get done. Because from what I understand, folks are struggling with that right now. So whatever goals, you know, we need to meet, if we need to do more paper assignments and less Canvas or SSO logins.
And that's something we definitely
Because again, these kids are, they've worked, this is their senior year, their junior year, and they've worked their whole career, their high school and, and a CISD career to get into colleges. And they're scared, they're scared that their grades are going to be suffering because they can't take notes in class. They can't log into their, or to their Canvas and do assignments. And so they're, they're, they're scared that this is going to affect their GPAs and it's going to affect their class ranks and their ability to get into the colleges that they've been working so hard to. So if the teachers and the administration can really push for that until we meet our goal, that'd be great.
That is something definitely we can ask the principals and see what their feedback is as well. See if, what we can address.
Thank you.
And the last one, Senate Bill 2929. This deals with events that occur that a referee or official, including administrator staff on, member on duty, may remove a spectator without warning if conduct is inappropriate. Our response is to our administrators is to be actively engaged during an event and correcting even the small behaviors so that we don't have any big behaviors where a, somebody would be removed from an event. And address any behavior that's inappropriate before it escalates and remove a spectator as a last resort if possible. But do not wait for the official. We want to do, we want to be proactive, solve the problem, or we want to be the ones removing them and not, and let the officials focus on the event. And that is the quick update. So now for my item. Sorry it took so long. But consideration and approve the 2025, 2026 Student Code of Conduct. On the board item, it listed some of the major highlights. I do want to point out that I utilized TEE's model, model handbook, or Student Code of Conduct as well as CISDs and comparing them back and forth and making the adjustments. A lot of the things were, some of it was vocabulary and some, some of the places CISD had a different vocabulary than TEE. And, but it meant the same thing. So I left a lot of that the same as we were used to that. But all of the changes were there. In the highlighted areas within the Student Code of Conduct, those are areas that were changed. So that was either wording additions or there were deletions that aren't shown, but the changes are shown. So those were all by law that were made mainly due to House Bill 6. And any questions about the Student Code of Conduct?
Just have one. On page 118, we've added a line under mistreatment of others. It says engage in any behavior that violates, excuse me, the Student Code of Conduct and is motivated by anti-Semitism. I, I just had a question because I don't see anything about any other races or racism or going against any other religion. I do see conduct against gender, gender-based conduct. But I don't see anything about any other races or religions. Is that something we could add?
So, I mean, we can add whatever you would like to that. That was something that's not in the law of the Student Code of Conduct. So the Student Code of Conduct tends to be very legal.
Which law was that? I was looking at your slides trying to see which one that came from. But you know which one that was? Which House Bill on the anti-Semitism?
That was House Bill 6.
That was part of House Bill 6.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I think we've kind of discussed this, but is there any final discussion? All right, may I? I have a motion to accept the 25, 2025, 2026 Student Code of Conduct as presented.
So moved. Second.
All right. So trustee Dawson has made the motion to accept, seconded by trustee May. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Okay. And the motion carries and the, and passes. And we have now adopted the 2025, 2026 Student Code of Conduct. Seven, zero. All right. No, we have like several things still, but, okay, the request, no, I'm, I'm, I'm working on it. The request has come that we take a break. So I'm going to, right now, we are in between and in the, almost the middle of your superintendent's report. So is it all right with you if we take a break at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The time is 8:18 and the board will take a 10-minute break. All right. It is now 8:30 and we are back in session. Dr. Landry, would you like to continue with your superintendent report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, thank you. I do have, there is one, one issue that I will, I am bringing to the, to the board for your guidance. It is item D, Discussion of Budgetary Impact of Awards. And so for some background, this, for the, since 2022, Conroy ISD has participated in the Forbes Best of List. And there are several, the best employer in the state of Texas, best employer for women and the best large employer. And so it has come to my attention that these awards come with a monetary cost. And so these are not awards that are just awarded. There are packages that have to be purchased to, in a, in a, in order to display them and publicize them and use them as a marketing tool for your district. And so this was brought to my attention. I was not aware of this. And because the number, the amount of money is not insignificant. You know, last year for, well, for the 23, 24 school year, for those three awards, the district paid $37,500 to be able to use those, the badging for those awards on its, its information. And then going forward into the 20, for the 2025 school year, for those same three awards, it would be close to $40,000 if we were to pay, to have, to be able to say we're on that, that particular list. Knowing that I, that I do, how fiscally responsible you all want to be, I wanted to bring this for guidance because, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for, you know, awards would be something that, that you, I figured you'd want to know about and maybe, maybe have a say in if we continue with this particular practice or if we go in a different direction.
So just to clarify, we paid for these awards. They were like voted on or?
So Forbes has listed on their website a criteria that an organization would be nominated, but you can self-nominate. And then, and then you are notified that you have, you are on the list. And, but to then make it on, to make it permanently on the list and be able to display their badging and their, you know, awards, you have to pay for, you have to buy a package. And each package level determines if you can use it on your website or in print or digital media or that sort of thing. So there are several different packages and through the years, we've kind of stepped up from, you know, one award, a low-level package of $6,000 all the way through to the gold or platinum level packages, which are, you know, 14, $15,000 to, you know, allow us to then use that as a marketing tool and badging on our, on our stuff.
I mean, I'd personally rather use like real statistics or real data, like our AP scores.
When did this, when did this first take place? How long ago?
The first, the first I, I see was 2022.
What month? Just out of curiosity. Do you know what month in 2022?
I don't have that information.
Because that didn't come to the board, I presume.
No, it would be an amount of money that would not have risen to the level.
The superintendent authorized then?
I would, I would assume so.
Interesting.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure. We wouldn't have received the Forbes awards had we not made the investment?
We would not have been able to display them as on our, on our website if, without purchasing the package. That's correct.
Okay.
Would we have been on the list of candidates to receive an award had we not subscribed?
So that depends on if we were nominated by an outside agency or we, if we self-nominated. And then they have a set criteria then to determine those organizations that are, are then nominated on whether or not they make the list. And then we are notified, we've made the list and then, but here's your, which package would you like to buy?
So if we choose to not move forward with spending those tens of thousands, as trustee Horton just stated, then we're officially not going to be able to put that we've won these awards on our website.
Correct. So even if we met their criteria, we would not be able to use that in any of our digital media or print news or anything to say that we are part of their list.
Do you mean going forward or even in the past since we've already paid for these?
Yeah, the great question. So we've paid for through the 2024 school year. But there were, we've paid for one of the awards for the 2025 school year, which is the best large employers. And so when I, when I was made aware, the other two award packages, we have been notified, we have made the list, but we have not paid for those two packages. So we, we could still at this point pay for those packages and use the badging. Or we could decide not to, in which case we would go forward without.
But we can still use the, the badging we've already for the past.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Can we, can we still say that?
Oh, no. Yeah. So yeah, once, it's only good for that particular, that particular year and then it renews.
So we're notified that we have been awarded this. It's just up to us whether or not we decide to pay for the package for the utilization of the badges.
Correct.
So we can still win the award and we can announce it. We just can't use a badge. This is all about badges.
We wouldn't be able to announce it. We would not be able to use the Forbes name.
Sounds like who's who, like those, you know, those who's who awards.
It has that flavor, yes.
Congratulations.
Okay. So the question, the, the real question is, even if, regardless of if we get to just say that we've won the award or not say that we've won the award or whatever, the real question, I guess, for the board is to decide, do we have a motion to continue paying for these badges?
I'm motion to discontinue paying for this.
Okay. The, the motion is that we discontinue the practice of paying for awards.
Second.
Okay. So that is trustee Duncan and then seconded by Nelson. Is there any other discussion on this?
I would just like to clarify. I think trustee Horton said it. I think our data is what speaks for us and we don't need to buy that. So.
And we, and we do have a plan going forward. Mr. Stewart has been working very diligently. You may have seen some of this already with our accountability ratings and our AP scores. We're going to be focusing so on a lot on what the student, how outcomes are and how well they are doing and how good our, our staff is and the positive things that we're doing as a district and let that speak for us.
Yes. And as a district and a school district, we should be merit-based and we should represent that in every aspect. So.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So all those in favor of discontinuing the practice of paying for our ability to display these awards, please show by the uplift of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion carries and we will no longer pay to play. Seven, zero, sorry. All right, Dr. Landry, teaching and learning?
Yes, Madam President. We have the presentation of the, the Shack Committee Annual Report.
President Odenwaller, members of board, Dr. Landry. It is my honor to be up before you to present the Health Advisory Council Annual Report. This year, the, the Shack had one major impact that they had to get done. And it's huge because it impacts our students and our staff. And it was the Wellness Plan. So we have an updated wellness plan that will last us for the next three years. Throughout Shack, they, the different committees worked to come up with ideas and suggestions. If you remember, we had a membership in October and then that membership changed again for the January meeting, which did cause some delays and not a lot of opportunity to meet as a committee. But they worked real hard to come up with some, made some progress. And you're going to see in the membership that you approved earlier, some members coming back to continue those to bring forward. We did adjust the plan for meetings next year to help accommodate that and make it a little bit better so it's evenly split into the two semesters. You were provided also as part of the board packet, the minutes of the meeting, of all the meetings. So you could see what has happened and what, what went on throughout the year. So at this time, I appreciate you receiving this report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merle. Anyone have any questions before we move on?
I just have a wonderful comments to make about our incredible Shack and all the great things that they're doing for our district and our students. It's, I've literally walked the halls of the Capitol with some Shack members and they're just so passionate about who they are and what they do to serve our community and just thankful for you and for your leadership as well.
Thank you very much.
And I want to compliment the organization of the meeting notes. The brevity of it, but the clarity of each meeting and the summary that you provided in the report. Thank you. I don't know who was responsible for that.
That, that's actually the parents on the committee. They're the ones that put it together.
Great job.
Ryan Tormora and Dr. Bryce Spear.
Yeah. Thank, thank you to the entire Shack.
They do a great job.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We are now to agenda item seven. We will now open the public hearing at this time. It is 8:41 to discuss the proposed budget and proposed tax rate for the upcoming 25, 2025, 2026 school year. The public hearing is required by the Texas Education Code and the Texas Tax Code to allow members of the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed budget and tax rate before the board takes action. Ms. Garza?
Well, good evening, President Odenwaller, members of the board, Dr. Landry and community members. This is our second public hearing this year, so I'll try to be brief. But it's my pleasure to be here this evening to discuss the proposed budget and tax rate for the upcoming school year. Kind of a timeline of where we've been and how we got here. April 1st was our first board workshop. You can see all the steps we've taken to get to this point this evening. We will hold the public hearing and then shortly after that, we will bring for your recommendation the approval of the budget and the tax rate for next school year. These are some of the challenges that we were facing coming into this budget year. And a legislative year always brings challenges as we're working through forecasting revenue, as the legislature is working through bills and they're making their way through their session. Legislature, for the most part, did a Legislature, for the most part, did address the majority of our challenges coming into this budget season. We are hopeful that they will continue the work on special education funding and upcoming legislative sessions, although we are grateful for the amount of money they sent our way this year. Session did end on June 2nd. Over 9,000 bills were filed this year. Some of the major initiatives in dealing with school finance were of course teacher compensation and our school finance bill. Continued property tax cuts continue to be a priority of the legislature and then education savings account. So the big school finance bill this year was House Bill 2, $8.5 billion worth of additional funding that was distributed to public schools across the state of Texas. 4.2 billion of that was allocated for salary increases. That was a definite initiative this year for our legislators to make sure that our teachers and staff were provided with a pay raise and we are thankful for that. 2.6 billion to address funding gaps. A new allotment for basic costs was created to address some of the inflationary costs that we were seeing related to insurance and fuel prices and all the things that it takes to run a school district on a day-to-day basis. 850 million for special education funding and then school safety, 430 million. And then 1.7 billion for some other targeted programs like CTE, teacher prep and early learning. Property tax relief, as I mentioned earlier, continues to be a priority of our legislature. They allocated nearly $51 billion of this biennium's budget to maintain cuts that were enacted in previous legislative sessions as well as provide new relief. Senate Bill 4 and Senate Bill 23 are two new bills that were passed this year, both pending constitutional amendment. They will go to the voters at the November election. We do anticipate they will pass. Senate Bill 4 increases the homestead exemption from 100,000 to 140,000. And then for our over 65 residents, Senate Bill 23 increases that homestead exemption for those residents from 10,000 to 60,000. Had a cost of 2.7 billion for Senate Bill 4 and 1.2 billion for Senate Bill 23. Our estimated funding increase, this is the increase that we anticipate seeing from House Bill 2 changes. We saw a much more targeted approach this year in terms of the allocation of funding. The allotments with the, the asterisk after them are brand-new allotments that were created this year and was targeting funding directly for specific initiatives that were important to the legislature. So the teacher retention allotment, the staff support retention allotment, as I mentioned earlier, the allotment for basic costs, and then a FIE evaluation allotment for special education. We're estimating an additional $41 million that will come our way as a result of the changes in House Bill 2. These are our budget assumptions moving into 25, 26. We're using student enrollment of 73,500 students, average daily attendance percentage of 93%. We did have a slight growth in property values despite the increased exemptions of 1.87%. Our certified property value growth in total for the district, $56.5 billion and our proposed tax rate of .9496. This is our proposed tax rate compared to our current tax rate. We are recommending no change in the tax rate, .6696 for maintenance and operations and .28 for debt service for a combined tax rate of .9496. Our projected revenue increase, 60.98 million next year, 41 million of that, of course, is House Bill 2. Local property value increase of 6.7 million as a result of that growth. State funding increase of 9.7 and then our teacher incentive allotment, that's a pass-through program that we're continuing to build on. You'll see an offsetting expenditure for that. Those funds are passed on to our teachers that earn designations. We're making a slight adjustment to interest earnings as rates continue to fall. And then TRS on behalf is another one of those pass-through entries that we will see an offsetting expenditure for. This is our approved teacher hiring schedule for 25, 26, starting teacher pay at $63,500. This is our approved salary increase that was approved at the July board meeting and the costs associated with each of those categories, 33.18 million in additional salary costs associated with that raise. 19.6 and 2.7 of that were funded by the state through these various allotments. And then our proposed personnel changes, 142.75 FTEs for next year at a cost of just over $8 million. You'll see in the green section of this graphic, the majority of those positions are for, to support our growing special education population. We saw a 22% increase in special education student growth last year and so this is an area that we're continuing to focus on providing support for. So you can see the majority of the positions that we're adding for next year are to support this growing population. This is our projected budget increase for next year. On the expenditure side, 49.08 million. 8.07 of that is for new personnel, the employee raise that I just mentioned, increasing substitute pay to keep up with surrounding districts and maybe more reflective of what the substitutes are doing each day in the classroom. This is the offset to teacher incentive allotment of a million. Software costs continue to be an area that we're seeing increases in pricing. And then other expenses such as utilities, we're opening two new campuses, fuel, insurance and supplies, and then the offset for TRS on behalf. So putting this all together, on the revenue side, beginning revenue of 700.07 million. With that additional revenue that we're projecting for next year puts our revenue at 761.05 million. On the expenditure side, beginning expenditures of 711.97 million. With the additional expenditures of 49.08 puts our expenditures at 761.05. So we are very excited to recommend a balanced budget this evening for your recommendation. This is our budget by major object. We are obviously a people-intensive business. The majority of our expenditures in our budget are related to payroll. 89.3% of our budget will be allocated towards payroll, 4.5% for contracted services. That's utilities is the largest item in there, 4.2% for supplies and materials. Fuel for our buses is the largest expenditure item in that category. And then 2% for equipment and other, and the largest item in there is our property insurance. This is the format that we will be asking the board to adopt tonight. We are legally required to adopt by function for the funds that are listed on this graphic. And if that's the information I have tonight, so if there are any questions or comments.
At this time, we invite the members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed budget or tax rate to come forward. Please state your name for the record and limit your remarks to three minutes. Seeing no speakers at this time, we will close the public hearing. The public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate is now closed. The time is 8:50. The board will now proceed with the regular agenda. Okay, Ms. Garza? We will now consider Item 7A, Approval of the 2025-2026 Official School Budget. Trustees, you have received the proposed budget as prepared by the administration and reviewed in prior meetings and public hearings. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Official School Budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. With a motion by Trustee Nelson and a second by Trustee Semler. All those in favor of accepting this budget as presented, please show by the uplift of hands. All those in, okay, that was everyone. Seven, zero, the motion carries and the 2025-2026 Official School Budget has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza and your team for your incredible work.
I would like to, to thank our team that is here this evening, Cindy Westrop, Janet Stowers and Brian Broussard, and we have many watching online. And then also to our team that has been working tires, tirelessly over the last five weeks to implement the raise process. It's a, it's a big deal and the time of year that it's very busy right now. So our Director of Payroll, Rachel Jimenez, Stephanie Carbonaro and Malia Pettit in our Technology Department, and then Paula Green and her team have been working many, many late nights trying to make this happen for our employees. So a big thank you to their behind-the-scenes efforts to make this happen.
Bravo to you and your team. Outstanding.
All right. Moving on to Consider and Adopt and Set by Order Resolution, the 2025 Advolorum Tax Rate to Support the 2025-2026 Budget. A, Maintenance and Operation Tax Rate and B, Debt Service.
All right, so tonight we are recommending the Board of Trustees approve the attached order resolution to adopt a 2025 tax rate of .6696 for the Maintenance and Operations Fund and .28 for the Debt Service Fund per $100 of taxable valuation to fund the 25-26 Official School Budget. In accordance with Section 2605 of the Texas Property Tax Code, specific language is required to be used in the motion to adopt the tax rate. This language is related to the comparison of the calculated no new revenue rate as required by statute to the proposed tax rate. This statutory language can be confusing and may lead people to believe that we are proposing an increase to the tax rate. However, it is important to clarify that the total combined rate of .9496 remains unchanged from last year's tax rate. I recommend your approval.
This, this year's proposed tax rate exceeds the effective tax rate. The vote on the tax rate must be a record vote. A motion to adopt the ordinance, resolution or order must be made in the following form.
You have the, you have the motion?
I have it, I'll accept the motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate at .9496, which is effectively a 9.68% increase in the tax rate.
A motion has been made by Trustee Dawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee May. Seconded to, the, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. The motion carries seven, zero and passes. The 2025-2026 tax rate has been adopted.
Thank you.
And financial reports.
All right, so these are our financial statements for the month end July 31st of 2025. This is our balance sheet. The General Fund, Debt Service, Child Nutrition and Self-Funded Insurance are displayed here. And the General Fund, total assets of 279.078 million dollars. Debt Service, 83.6. Child Nutrition, 12.8. Self-Funded Insurance, 522,000. This is our income statement through the end of July. In the General Fund, total revenue of 643 million. Debt Service, 167 million. Child Nutrition, 29.9 million and Self-Funded Insurance, 51.2 million in revenues. Our 2023 Bond Referendum update through the month of July. Total funds encumbered and expended, life to date of the bond, just over $1 billion, 901.4 million estimated to complete. We do have 777 million remaining to sell. We do plan on bringing the parameter orders to you in September for a possible refunding and then our third sale of the 2023 Bond Referendum that will happen later on this year or early next year. Our Self-Funded Insurance update, as expected, July, not a great month. I, I shared at the June, or at the July board meeting that the month of July was going to be big because we had five weeks of claims that were settling. You can see a $3.2 million loss for the month of July alone. We're looking at over $13 million loss for the year. We have had five participants in the plan reach our stop-loss limit, which is $550,000 in claims. We have had over 100 participants that have reached what we consider large claimants, over $50,000. So this is something we're going to be keeping a really close eye on and we'll have to have and start having discussions in early September, maybe October to, to decide what we want to do next year. You know, given the plan design changes that we brought to you for approval in, in April, we'll kind of see what September looks like and then we may need to start making some decisions about how we want to move forward because like I mentioned earlier, we have to make a decision by the end of the calendar year if we're going to make a move. So we'll, we'll watch this, kind of see how it, how it turns out. We will bring the transfer to you probably in October or November to kind of close out this fiscal year in terms of what we need to bring from the General Fund to make this fund whole for the year. We do have a $7.8 million fund balance that will help us offset that $13 million loss, but we will need to make a contribution from the General Fund as we had discussed earlier. So we'll finalize that as we close out year end and, you know, we're getting ready to, to close out fiscal year end and start that process. So we should know those numbers in early fall.
Ms. Garza, I'm sorry, can you say that again? We have, what's the balance in the General Fund, you said?
So in this fund, we have a fund balance, a savings account of $7.8 million. So what you're seeing here is a $13 million loss for the year. We can use that 7.8 million to offset some of that, but not all of it. So we're going to have to bring some cash from the General Fund over to the Self-Funded Insurance Fund.
That 7.8 is going into the new year, right?
That's helping offset this $13 million loss in this current year.
We want to be sure I understood you. Thank you.
Yes.
From a trend perspective, though, once school starts, it tends to kind of not be as bad, correct?
That is true. That is true. So we, we, we usually see a really big uptick in the summer because that's when teachers are off and they're taking care of doctor's appointments. We start to see things kind of slow down at the end of August and early September. So we'll just have to kind of see what, what September and October look like because we want to give our HR department plenty of time if this is a move we're going to make. We don't want to throw that on them in early December and we've got to have it done by the end of the year because I, I would assume it's a process. We've never been through it, but we will start having those discussions with Gallagher, our consultant on health, health insurance and have those discussions, but we're just going to have to see how the year starts.
Okay, thank you. When you say move, move we make, we've never moved, done that before.
Well, if we, if we want to move away from self-funded insurance.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what you were getting at. Thank you.
Because that, there's only two options. We either go to TRS Active Care or we continue to be self-insured. All right, so our investments as of July 31st, total par value of 1.1 billion dollars. Our combined portfolio is yielding 4.43, so we are outperforming our benchmark of the 90-day T-bill at 4.23%. And that is our update for the month of July.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. I know it's been a rough summer getting through everything. I thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam, Madam President, if I may, because, you know, Mrs. Garza, she did recognize her people as well, she should because they're amazing and literally pulled midnight shifts to get things done. But I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mrs. Garza as well, her amazing leadership for that, for our Finance Department, keeps it whole, keeps us moving and she does an amazing job.
All right, we're on to Agenda Item 9, Board Policy Action. Discuss some possible action to adopt the revisions to Board Policy BDD local. Dr. Landry?
Yes, Madam President, we have for your consideration for adoption is Board Policy BDD, which we have seen before in a first read, but this is the policy that would amend, you know, or give you guys the flexibility to seek legal counsel, either through an in-house general counsel or through a law firm as well. So while it doesn't specify any specific firm or lawyer, it gives you guys the opportunity to seek the most economical method of getting legal counsel for the district and is, and is our recommendation that, that we go forward.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, and for clarity on this, the previous policy stated that we could only use a TASB attorney. Is that correct?
No, it was, it was that we had to have in-house general counsel. It didn't give us the ability to have flexibility one way or the other and that's what we're changing.
Okay, I thought we had to specify that the attorney was selected by them, but not on this one. Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. I noted that we said the most economical version. Are we going to be consistently comparing how much we're spending throughout the year just to compare to what we spent in the past?
Well, given the fact that our, our board is extremely fiscally watching all of our dollars, I would agree that needs to be a priority and that would fall towards Dr. Landry of working with whomever, whatever we're doing. We've got to constantly be double checking.
Yeah, we're, you know, we, we will always be cross-referencing what we paid in general, in-house general counsel salary, plus the, any outside firms that we contracted with pick up the extra work against any, any form of legal counsel that we, and we will always seek the version that will give us the most cost-effective savings.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the revision to Board Policy BDD as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Nelson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee May. All right. The motion has been made to adopt the revisions to the Board Policy to BDD as presented. Please show by the uplift of hands. All in favor? Okay.
Madam President, I.
Hold on, oh, motion. Motion carries and BDD revisions have been adopted. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, for a point of clarification, can, do we have the number of the total we did spend for total general counsel plus outside firm use for the last year? Or do we have a roundabout number or estimation?
We do. Yes, we do have it.
I just wanted to make that publicly known. That would be great.
Well, I think if we do, we are going to bring a presentation forward next month, I believe.
That's correct. So, you know, once we, now that we have the policy in place to now seek the most economical way to do business.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's publicly available.
We're going to publicly show, you know, what we were doing, how much we were spending, and what the proposed new way to do business would be, assuming it is a cost savings.
Yes, because there were, there was public speech about that and then we've received some emails regarding the numbers and just want to make sure we have the actual numbers available.
We will openly share all of the information that we have from, you know, from a cost standpoint.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 10 for Board Discussion Items. Discussion and Possible Revisions to Board Policy D C Local. Dr. Landry?
Yes, ma'am. So D C Local, this would be, these are all first reads, so these are for your, you know, just review of. But D C Local is in response to House Bill 2, and there was some language there that changed. It repealed a law that forced the school districts to pay the surcharge for retiree-hire employees. That law was repealed in House Bill 2, and so the D C Local, the amendment would reflect that change where the district would not be on the hook for the surcharge.
Any discussion or questions regarding that? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Landry, would you move on to, well, actually, what we're going to do is we're on to EMI, but there's been requests for some legal counsel, so I'm going to table that motion for, or that item until after closed session and bring it back if that's all right with you.
Certainly.
Okay. So now we're on to discuss impossible revisions to Board Policy C H Local.
Yes, ma'am. We have, so C H Local deals with finance and how we, how we conduct business. We have Mr. Broussard available to answer any questions that you guys might have in regards to the amendments that we're recommending.
Is there any discussion regarding C H?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's worked on this. I think it's in great shape, in my opinion.
And thank you for hearing us out and what our concerns with and that we worked together to get to where we needed to be on it. Thank you, Mr. Broussard, and your team.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Good job.
Good job. All right, moving on to further discussion, Board Policy D P. Dr. Landry?
This is an item that was brought by, by the trustees, revisit to D P Local, which would allow volunteer chaplains into the school buildings for students to opt-in, to visit with them during non-instructional time.
Trustee Nelson, would you like to start any discussion that we have?
Sure, yes. This was a bill that was passed in the last legislative session to employ chaplains. I put it on the, on the agenda with the last board and it failed as, to employ, and then we tried it to volunteer and that also failed. And I feel that the more we hear from the public and the more we just hear in general about the need for mental health issues and being able to do something about that, I really feel like this is a good action item that we can do that can really make a difference and just get some extra hands in there and extra sets of eyes and really try to pour into our students.
Any other discussion?
I had a couple of questions. First, it's been said, and I don't really know why because I don't see it in the policy, but I've heard people concerned that it's going to replace guidance counselors, and I, I didn't think that was true, but I wanted to see if there was anything that should be mentioned about that.
No, there's, there's nothing in the policy that says that and, and because this is just a volunteer position, there's no need to replace anybody, but I don't see a problem of if we want to add something to the language of that that says that just as a side note that this isn't to replace any counselors, this is just to be a volunteer position. I wouldn't mind writing or adding that language if you're all for it.
I think that would be great, maybe even just, you know, in addition to, like, our volunteers, in addition to, something like that. Yeah.
You said you had a couple of questions.
Yes, one more. I noticed the, it says the superintendent will be responsible for the screening process. Do we have a pretty rigorous screening process with that?
Yes, ma'am. So we would, any volunteer, we have, we have an HR protocol that the volunteers would go through to make sure that they are background-checked and, you know, anybody we put in contact with, students, we're going to make sure that they are of the appropriate standard.
And is there a protocol for anybody that doesn't follow the guidelines within the policy?
The, actually, our policy, I'm pretty sure in E M B, I'd have to double-check where it is, and maybe Ms. Bellou, I'm used to calling her Karen, Bellou could tell us. But I'm pretty certain that all of our, what was stated, they had to follow all of our policies. Any volunteer, any third-party vendor, any volunteer of a third-party vendor, any of those have to follow and adhere to all of our, our school policies.
So that's just, it'll kind of kick back to our volunteer policy, is what you're saying? So they'll just have to follow all the volunteer policies and screening?
That's correct. So they would, any volunteer, they would be treated as any volunteer in the building and would be expected to, to maintain a certain standard that we would manage.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just mention that the policy also says that the district shall not employ or accept a volunteer. You know, that's been adjudicated of certain offenses, so, and the superintendent will have, the policy directs that the superintendent will have to put, you know, put a process in place, so presumably as part of that process, you can make sure or ensure that nobody is allowed near children that you find to be unsuitable.
And we also stated, you said an opt-in, but that's a parent must opt-in to this option. So it is not, and, and we're not employing anyone, it's just, and, and I'm pretty sure that it also states that they have to have certain certifications in order to be that, serve as a chaplain.
Can I jump in on that? I had a few comments. So I was reading S B 763, which is what this is based on, and it said that a school district may employ a chaplain instead of a school counselor to perform the duties required of a school counselor. And I think because we're asking them to provide the same duties as a school counselor, they should have the same qualifications that a school counselor would need to have. So there, there is some language that I would like to insert into this policy.
What language would you like to insert?
So in the qualifications section, I would like to add, so for the purposes of this policy, a chaplain shall be a person who, and this is where I would insert, has the same job requirements and qualifications as found in Texas Administrative Code Title 19, Chapter 30, or 239, and obtains, and then it would follow the rest.
That's the qualifications of a counselor? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So that would be, the legislation that you just read was to employ a chaplain to replace counselors, and this is just a volunteer position. So the qualifications that is stated here would be a chaplain is the person who obtains an ecclesiastical endorsement from his or her faith group.
Right, but we're asking them to perform the same duties as a school counselor, so I think they should have the same qualifications in their background.
I don't believe that we're asking them to perform the same duties as a school counselor.
That's what S B 763 states.
I thought S B 763 was rewritten after it stated that to remove that portion.
This is the final version.
Yeah, I mean, counselors are scheduling courses and, I mean, the chaplains wouldn't be doing that, so I'm not quite sure.
But Ms. Bellou, could you confirm that our policy is not stating that they're going to be doing the same, I mean, our policy isn't stating that they're going to be doing the same things as counselors?
Especially if we add that revision, that this wouldn't be to replace anything.
If you guys look, your policy has the responsibilities list, so I would just suggest you guys look at, a chaplain shall be available for any student who seeks the chaplain's help or care, be a visible integral member, so just look at those services, and that's the services that your chaplain would be providing or would be authorized to provide according to your policy.
I still would like them to have the same job requirements and qualifications as a counselor. That's where I stand.
So, okay, would you like to make a motion to?
Well, we're just-
Oh, wait, we're just discussing it anyway. Never mind, my bad.
That's where I stand.
Can we confirm if this, so you said you were referencing the final version of the bill? Can we confirm that that language was removed or added? That they have, they have to have the same qualifications as a school counselor?
It says that they're-
Tell me, S B what again?
They're, they're being asked to perform the duties required of a school counselor.
Well, I think that's what she was, her point was, the responsibilities are listed out here for a chaplain in this policy, so that's not the case given our policy.
Right.
So to make that requirement be written in our policy, it would change the-
Also, I don't really understand why we would-
The minimum responsibility.
Employ somebody with the same qualifications as a counselor and not just make them a counselor.
Right.
I think that's a great idea. Let's employ them.
I don't think that's the intention of this policy as written.
I mean, they could always apply for a job if they have the certifications.
Any further, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we will move on to discussion and possible revisions to Board Policy E H B A G Local. Dr. Landry, would you start us off and with the discussion on this? And trustee May, would you start us with Board Discussion when he's done?
Yes, ma'am. So this is another policy that was brought forward by a trustee to, to, I'd say rectify or make available financial information based on Senate Bill 111, Senate Bill 111, which, which did not pass, but the language is valid, and, and we've heard from several, you know, constituents that it would be helpful for our parent base to be aware of what all the district is doing financially in regards to special ed funding and expenditures.
Thank you. So this summer, we approved our district compensation plan, and in the process, I personally spoke with numerous employees about compensation, and I know each of you did as well. Those conversations left me with a renewed determination to identify efficiencies so that any potential savings can be passed along to both employees and taxpayers. I believe wholeheartedly that E H B A G will give the board and taxpayers the data needed to ensure we are using taxpayer funds for special education legal expenses responsibly and efficiently. Without this policy, our board has not consistently received information regarding special education legal costs. In fact, since I've been on the board, there has only been one instance where some information was provided to us about a due process case. When I attempted to verify what we were being told by reviewing the due process transcript, I was shocked to find that the information provided by our former in-house attorney was biased, incomplete, and lacking any cost analysis or plan for ongoing updates. Through subsequent information requests, I later learned that the same, this same case is still in appeals and has now cost taxpayers over $185,000. This is just one example of how a lack of transparency in relation to special education legal fees has harmed our district. A closer look at our special education legal expenses shows we consistently spend approximately $200,000 each year above and beyond what we previously paid for in-house legal counsel. And who benefits from that spending? The lawyers, not our students, not our families, and not our employees. E H B A G is designed to correct that. It ensures financial transparency in how taxpayer dollars are spent on special education legal expenses, establishes a clear reporting cadence from the superintendent to the board with required details, and provides taxpayers with visibility by posting special education legal fees on our website. The goal of E H B A G is to provide parents and students with disabilities meaningful access to training and resources so they are better equipped to understand their child's educational opportunities and rights. Finally, I want to thank all of the trustees who provided feedback on the first draft of this policy. Your input helped us collaboratively, collaboratively shape a stronger, more well-rounded policy. Also want to thank Dr. Landry for his guidance on the implementation, and thank you to Cara Bellou for ensuring the policy is legally sound. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, trustee May. I'm really excited about this, and I feel like this is something that you ran on and it's been really close to your heart, and it's really special to see something like this, and I feel not only is it going to benefit the students and families of Commerce I S D, but the state of Texas and really the nation as a whole, which has really been a pattern for you up in the Capitol fighting for our special ed students. So commend you.
Is there any way we could add something in that says the reporting shall be based on existing documentation so that we don't require special education staff to create additional summaries, timelines, or narrative statements? I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because they already have so much reporting on their shoulders that having any additional reporting is going to overload them.
Well, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to state that trustee May worked really hard with Dr. Landry on this to make sure that we were taking this into consideration in the workload, and some adjustments were made in the process in the decision-making here. Dr. Landry, are you comfortable with what's being brought forward?
Yes, we can, we can handle, you know, the reporting. You know, I, I will agree, though, you know, compliance at the special ed level, the administrative level is, is quite a mountain. So if there are existing documents that could be utilized to, to meet the requirements, then that would be tremendously helpful, yes.
I agree. I think that's a good suggestion, so we'll definitely take a look at that. I also want to just point out that at the bottom of the policy, there's a transition timeline, so the reports reported by this policy shall be implemented as soon as practicable, but no later than January 31st, 2026. So definitely there's a runway there as well, but not, not doing double work is definitely a good thing, so let's definitely take a look at that.
Is it going to be our special education people that are responsible for compiling this information?
Yes, ma'am. It would be. I mean, they, yeah, they're the keepers of the, you know, that particular set of information. So as, we will have to build in mechanisms of reporting so when an issue reaches a certain level that they would, they would report it out, and then we would, we would have systems in place to make sure that it was, it was on the website and, yeah, as noted.
And just to point out, too, that this is only if the legal, if the legal fees go over $10,000 for one student.
Okay.
Any other, excuse me, any other discussion?
Kudos, trustee May. This is a great policy. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion on this item, we will move on to closed session. The time is now 9:20. The board will now adjourn into closed session under authority of Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.072. No action or votes will be taken in closed session. And the time is 9:21. The time is 11:05, and we are now back in open session. We're on to agenda item, consider an approved purchase of 5.005 acre parcel in the Oak Ridge feeder zone and authorize the interim superintendent to negotiate, I mean, to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the transaction. Do I have a motion to execute the property 5.005 acre parcel in the Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge feeder zone on Robinson Road and authorize the interim superintendent to execute documents necessary to effectuate the transaction?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have trustee Duncan with the motion, trustee Dawson with-
Not Nelson.
Oh, sorry, Nelson with the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible revision to Board Policy EMI. I will seek a motion to untable EMI at this time.
I move to untable EMI.
Thank you, trustee Nelson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Dawson. All those in favor of untabling it, please show by the uplift of hands. Two, three, four, five, six. That's six. All those opposed? That's six, all those opposed? Oh, sorry, I apologize. The record reflect that it was only five and four untabling. And all opposed? Two, okay. The motion carries to untable. Is there any discussion on the item of E M I at this time? All right, I would like to ask Ms. Baloo for a legal recommendation for the board at this time.
The issue of placing the Ten Commandments in school districts is being considered by a federal judge in Texas. That federal judge has indicated a ruling is imminent, and certainly before September 1st. Therefore, I would recommend that the signs not be placed up at this time, awaiting the judge's final order or ruling.
Is there any other discussion?
Thank you for that recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Baloo.
All right. Moving on, we're ready. There being no further business before the board, I declare this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees adjourned, and the time is 11:08.